Thank you, everybody, for joining us. We now call the December 8th Committee of the Whole 2025 Meeting to order. Our first item is 1B, the Adoption of the Agenda. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, with that, we'll move on to Items 2A, Special Recognitions. You know, without it being on gallery, I can't see that.
Ms. Roberson and Mr. Holland.
Can I maybe get the Ms. Maggie? Ms. Roberson and Mr. Holland, would you like to voice vote?
Aye.
I voted aye.
Thank you. All right. I don't know who the 2A, the Special Recognition is the Wando Marching Band. Thank you, Mrs. Watley. We're going to turn it over to Mrs. Danny and Mr. Pruitt. Ms. Danny?
Thank you, Ms. Huggins. I'd like to invite Mr. Darby and Mr. Straderman to the podium to help me recognize our 212 recipient. Today's 212 recipient, Ms. Hannah Studemire. Today's 212 recipient, Mrs. Hannah Studemire, was selected as the State Assistant Principal of the Year. She was selected for her exemplary leadership, her passion for rigorous student-centered instruction, and her unwavering belief in every student's potential. Her work, grounded in data, strong relationships, and innovative instructional practices, has helped drive measurable improvements in student outcomes and has strengthened and expanded support systems for multilingual learners and energized a school-wide culture of high expectations. Ms. Studemire's efforts embody the extra degree, and we're so thankful for all she does for North Charleston High School and its students. Thank you, Ms. Studemire.
So, Mrs. So. Yes, please come on up, Mrs. Please come on up and be recognized. Mom is a former CCSD educator of 30-plus years, nearly 42. Nearly 42, to be exact. I wasn't going to tell your age, but you told it yourself.
I'm proud of it.
Good to see. And I just want to thank all these people for being here to celebrate Hannah. Y'all come on up here. And Board, we're going to ask you to come down and take a picture. We hadn't had recognition of Principal or an Assistant Principal of the Year in over two decades here in Charleston County. And Ms. Studemire embodies the very best that we have, and she gets to learn from two exceptional educators in Henry Darby and Trevor Straderman, who lead North Charleston High School with integrity, character, and a focus on kids. And so Hannah, we're so blessed that you're ours, and we don't expect that anyone's ever going to steal you away and that you're going to stay here forever and ever. Okay, good, we've got that on the record. And I want to thank her family, who they were able to celebrate with us last week, and her husband, who celebrated with us from, I think I can say where you were, Hannah. Well, who was, I stalked him in Germany, and he joined us. And several trustees, Mrs. McKinney and Mrs. Watley, were able to join us. And again, Hannah, you represent the best, and we're so proud of you. And Mr. Darby, we're thankful to you, and Mr. Straderman, for your tremendous leadership in the work you're doing to change kids' lives at North Charleston High School. So, we're going to take a picture, and you can shake our trustees' hands. And happy holidays to you.
Good to see you.
How are you doing?
Good to see you. Good to see you.
Good evening, Board of Trustees Members, District Leaders, and Members of the Community. We now would like to recognize one of the top marching bands in the state and the nation, the Wando High School Marching Band. The Warriors completed their most successful season ever, finishing 11th at the Band of America Grand Nationals in Indianapolis. They were the only marching band from our state to earn finalist honors at this competition, which featured a total of 108 bands. Their program record finish came after winning the Bands of America Regional Championship and their state-record 16th South Carolina Band Directors Association State Marching Band Championship. In fact, this is the first time they've accomplished all three in one year, finalist status at Grand Nationals, a 6A state title, and a regional championship. Congratulations to Director Bobby Lambert and representatives here from the Wando Marching Band.
So, I want to thank Mr. Lambert. You can't leave that quickly. I want to thank Mr. Lambert, who I've known personally for about two decades, for his dedication to doing great things here in Charleston County, who hadn't left us despite being recruited all over the nation. He really is exceptional and believes in great outcomes for kids, not only at Wando, but really has been a leader here in CCSD. So Bobby, thank you for just being fantastic. And Mr. Coker, thank you for the support that you offer these great young people. And if you haven't or didn't get a chance to see them, they simply are exceptional from start to finish. I'm so proud that they're here in the Charleston County School District and that they represent us well. So, thank you again for your tremendous leadership, students, because Mr. Lambert couldn't do it without you. And I know he toes a hard line. I've seen him. He does it with me, too. I ignore him, but y'all don't, and I'm glad for you. And we were hoping they'd be able to play a little tonight between parade and holiday concerts and all the things. They couldn't pull it off, but perhaps in the new year. So, our trustees, they make a lot of our decisions here, or all of our decisions. They're going to come by and shake your hands, guys, okay? And thank you again. And they're going to take a picture with you. Let's take a picture first. Dr. Temple, y'all slide together, and Sully's going to take your photo here. Ms. Lieber, Ms. Bailey, y'all come on in here so you can get seen. Okay, Sully. Thank you again. Happy holidays to you. Thank you, Mr. Coker. See you in the morning.
Congratulations.
Oh, you should be past there.
Thank you, Bobby. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, everybody. We got so excited about that lineup that we flipped the agenda, but that's okay. How about the performance from the School of the Arts? That was awesome. Next item up is Strategic Education. Items 3A, Ms. Lieber. I'm going to hand this portion over to you.
All right, and as I traditionally do, I hand it back to the Superintendent.
Well, thank you, Ms. Lieber. Thank you for meeting with us and changing your schedule last week to meet with us late in the afternoon over at North Charleston. We're grateful for you. The Classroom Walkthrough Tool is on the agenda tonight to share with you the results. Ms. Dr. Clamp's going to lead this conversation. For those of you new to the Board, the Classroom Walkthrough Tool, as a reminder, is the way that we assess what teachers are doing in our classrooms, and it's a way that we give feedback and determine what sort of professional development our teachers need, again, based on observation. And so Dr. Clamp's going to go through that with you right now. He, along with Gail Morris and Lori Bates, lead this work for the Charleston County School District. It's Dr. Clamp, if you'll take it over. And then we're certainly open to any questions you might have. Thank you, Ms. McKinney and Mrs. Watley, and Ms. Lieber. I'm sorry, Ms. Lieber.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Good evening, Board. And I'm going to do my best to stay in the holiday spirit, as well as a spirit of excellence following a state national champion is a tough order, but we're going to do our best tonight as we share this information, which is really exciting for us, because what we've seen is that the use of this Classroom Walkthrough Tool, our digital tool, has allowed us to really calibrate what is going on in our classrooms to be able to provide our leaders and our teachers with informative information to provide feedback so that they can improve. So tonight's presentation gives you a little bit of background knowledge on the Classroom Walkthrough Tool, some data we've collected over the last semester, and what we're going to do next as we use this data to improve. So you can advance to the next slide. The Classroom Walkthrough Tool is a key instrument in our walk-through calibrations. We engage in walk-through learning walks throughout our schools annually. And most recently, we have been very serious about calibrating our walks, meaning that we are learning and walking together so that each raider can be sure that they're evidencing the scale that they're using when they're rating that individual teacher. Our Walkthrough Tool, as you can see here, allows for strength in teacher consistency and accurate feedback. It allows for incredible student engagement and rigor and improved mastery. It's aligned to classroom instruction, and the architecture of the Walkthrough Tool is aligned with the South Carolina Teaching Standards 4.0 rubric. And then finally, it provides us with information that's both measured and monitored that we can use to improve instruction. The process that undergoes during the Walkthrough calibration is, each school is given an opportunity to provide itself with this enormous amount of feedback. And I say provide itself, because the calibration walks include diverse sets of teams of both district leaders, school leaders, central office staff, as their calendars are available. And over the past two years, we've engaged in calibration walks in both our high schools and our middle schools. And I want to thank Dr. Williams and Dr. Appleheimer for their leadership in helping schools design and prepare for these visits. And so the visits, while the Classroom Walkthrough Tool is the instrument, also create an opportunity for conversation and dialogue, and really a space to allow, as you can see on this slide, for two to three specific indicators to be focused upon in those walkthroughs. And I've been excited to be able to participate in those, both at the elementary, middle, and high school level even this year. And we use those walks to calibrate and to create information for improvement. So, to give you an example of that, three raiders will go into a classroom, focused specifically on seeing how a teacher's questioning techniques are used in the classroom. We're rating that particular element, that indicator, on a scale of one to four, with three being proficient and four being exceeding proficiency. When the raiders come out, we discuss what we've seen, what evidence the students have displayed, what evidence the teachers displayed, and then we rate privately and then show that publicly to align that calibration. And you'll see in the data that it's that piece of the practice that has really assisted us in gathering quality information and feedback. What also happens during these calibration walks is the schools are allowed a really robust debrief at the conclusion of that call. They get a chance to see all the data, they get a chance to hear all the information, and immediately begin planning for next steps and how they can use that information to improve instructional practice. To transition to the next slide, you'll see two things that I believe are very important as we continue to monitor our progress. We have grown in our walkthroughs this school year substantially. We've increased our walks from 5,000 over 7,000. Almost 8,000 classroom walkthroughs have been logged in the first semester. And I want to celebrate our instructional coaching team that Jamie Costner leads, our principals, our assistant principals, our classroom instructional coaches, and our associate superintendents and executive directors, who have all played a part in that increase in visibility and access to the classroom. Now, what the data, the data that you see described or provided here shows you the average ratings amongst those classroom walks. Now, you can see that from last year at this time to this year at this time, this data would show a decline in these ratings. But what I want to emphasize is that the decline is not necessarily an indication of decreased practice. We believe it's an indication of improved calibration. I am a high raider myself, so I want to go in with a raider who is really strategic and very critical so that it helps calibrate me. We believe that the increase in frequency and the calibration of the walks has really provided us accurate data to do what you've seen described on this slide, really identify our high-impact focus areas. Because the calibration tool, you'll see listed here, a number of indicators that align with the South Carolina 4.0 Teaching Standards rubric. And this year specifically, we use this data to inform the areas that we want to give most focus, questioning, lesson structure, grouping students, and academic feedback. And it's those key areas that both will continue to rate and provide ourselves with information and feedback to give to the teachers. What we're also witnessing is principals aligning this with their 90-day plan, indicators, and continuous improvement processes to begin immediate professional development. I had a chance to participate in our Elevation Zone at Goodwin's debrief after their learning walk, and immediately, we recognized that teachers needed support and increase in student talk in the classroom. So immediately, exemplar classrooms were identified, steps to improve that instructional practice were aligned, and principals and associates were able to guide that work. As you advance to the next slide, these indication areas really align with current research, and the focus in understanding that lesson phase and higher-order questioning really provide opportunities for improved instruction and achievement in the classroom. We know that timely, specific, and actionable feedback is important. So we want to get this information back into the classroom, back into teachers, as they use this in their professional learning communities and their professional development series, as well as creating opportunities for collaborative learning, both across the school professionally and with students, to see and realize both achieved, both increases in achievement and engagement. As we take this research, you can advance to the next slide. It really helps us to diagnose what is the root cause. And so what we've identified already this year, and again, we're undergoing all engaged practice to improve, is that we're seeing a variation in the implementation of learning targets. We're seeing a varied frequency in the use of higher-order questioning STEM, so the types of questions and the frequency of questions, which is also realized in the amount of student talk that's going on in the classroom. We've witnessed opportunities where inconsistent structures for discussion and collaborative learning are spaces where we can grow and improve. And ultimately, the pace at which our lessons are being engaged, we can recognize those inconsistencies, which allow us an opportunity to improve. So as I close on the final slide, you'll see what we're doing next. And we have positioned these next steps into three key, critical areas with an instructional leadership-focused lens, a teacher-support lens, and how the system and the structure itself built around the schools is allowing for our improvement and refinement to happen. So, very important to note here is that we believe that teacher voice matters, so we're involving them in the conversations about both the professional development and the professional learning communities. And our leaders are participating already this semester in not only engaging in professional learning community meetings, but also leading them. And it's been exciting to see our principals engage in that work. We believe this Classroom Walkthrough in the final bullet and systems instructions really provides us a uniform way to collect evidence and to provide ourselves feedback for improvement. So I'll pause there to see if you have any questions about the Walkthrough Tool and the way in which calibration walks assist us in providing this evidence. And again, want to celebrate the teachers, the principals, our associate superintendents and executive directors in their work in participating in these classroom walks.
Dr. Clamp, do you mind if I add one point?
Yes, ma'am.
What's really important for you to know is that we believe teacher effectiveness, as you heard it stated in the schools, is the most critical component in regards to increased student achievement. So this is the way we measure that, as Dr. Clamp has suggested. And this is also the way we manage our progress on your guardrail that has to do with high expectations for students. So we believe that we can only gauge the expectations for students in the classroom by watching teachers teach. And this is the mechanism through which we capture that data and report to associate superintendents. And so we're really pleased with the work that the district's doing and the dedication that our school leaders, as Dr. Clamp shared, have exhibited in regards to calibrating their observations to ensure that everybody sees, believes, and rates teacher performance the same way, quite frankly, because we don't want one educator giving a rating of two, for example, and one giving four. The look fours are critically important, and that's why calibration is so important. Thank you very much, Dr. Clamp. And we're certainly open, Mrs. Lieber and Mrs. Watley, to any questions that any of you might have.
Well, thank you to the both of y'all, and it looks like a fabulous tool. So, I will start with online. Mr. Holland, would you have any comments, questions? Mr. Holland?
No, ma'am.
All right, Ms. Roberson, do you have any questions?
Yes, I want to stay right where the Superintendent just ended. How does the district prevent inflated scores?
Yes, ma'am. So, Ms. Roberson, thank you for that question. That is the method for, that's the purpose for the calibration. So as I shared earlier, we will go into classrooms with multiple leaders. So, I may go in with a principal and an instructional coach, watching for the same indicator, for example, questioning. We know what we should be looking for, and we know what that looks like and sounds like in the classroom. We immediately come out of the classroom, and we actually physically put our hands behind our back. We put a one, two, three, or four up, and then we show it to our teammates. And so we're immediately looking for alignment and/or misalignment. So in cases where the rating, I may have a two, Ms. Huggins may have a three, Dr. Williams may have a four, we have a conversation immediately about, what did you see and what evidence did you collect that would indicate that that teacher's performance in questioning was either proficient or not? And so it really creates this opportunity, not to challenge in an unprofessional way, but to really question the professionals in the rating. And so we come to consensus in that moment before that rating becomes input into our digital system. So the more that we do that, and we really challenge ourselves to have diverse groups of team members that go in, whether it be a school-based individual, a teacher, a leader, a principal, assistant principal, a district leader. We bring alongside our curriculum instruction team, our math, our science, our social studies, our English leaders, so that we can check those ratings for inter-rater reliability. So we're doing it in the moment, and the more we do it together, the better off we're going to be to really rate appropriately.
And my final question, Dr. Clamp. What are there, any instructional areas that cannot be measured through walkthroughs?
Well, that's a really good question. So the South Carolina Teaching Standards Tool identifies four key areas for observation. That's instruction, planning, environment, and professionalism. Inside of the instruction domain is an opportunity for teachers to teach, and obviously, we understand and know what students learn and can do by assessing them. So the assessment side of the evaluation is oftentimes not observed, because it may actually occur formatively at the beginning of a lesson, or it may occur summatively at the end of a unit. So while it's not necessarily directly tied to the observation, it is something that we definitely measure and look at, both teacher assessments and our formative assessment checks that we use to diagnose our proficiency as we implement standards. So, that's an area that's not necessarily reflected on the Classroom Walkthrough Tool, but it's certainly one that's very important to us, that we measure on the outside of instruction.
All right, thank you.
I will go ask Mr., sorry, Mr. Bowski.
Dr. Clamp, I'm more kind of interested in, and this is definitely a great tool to be used. So we, just walk me through, so I'm clear on it. A walkthrough is done. The rubric is addressed by this team, and the teacher is basically advised of what the score is. So your calibration is bringing you down. You know, you're trying to set that baseline from all of the walkthroughs, or is it, I mean?
That's a great question.
I'm trying to figure out when this is going, and then how you're getting this number, and then how you're using this number to help a teacher that's below the average.
Right.
When it finally, all the walkthroughs are done.
Yep.
Do you understand that question?
Yes, sir, I think I understand your question very well. So inside of a building, we communicate directly to the principal and his instructional team the ratings of the school, teachers that were observed. So, when a team goes out, it's ideal to see about three teachers in an hour. So we're going to go in, we're going to spend 10 or 15 minutes in the classroom. We're going to spend a little bit of time calibrating outside of the classroom. Then we're going to go to the next room. We may, as a team, position ourselves to go see three math classes. If we're in a middle school, for example, that may have three members of math on that team, we may go see all three of them in that day, which is also going to give us a picture of the lesson pacing and the alignment amongst the three. But those ratings for the school and the feedback happens in that debrief for that specific school. We're collecting all of this information on the back end digitally through our tool that we actually communicate a couple of ways. We communicate by grade band and by school level. So monthly, Lori Bates and her team provide our associate superintendents with the quantity of observations collected and the average ratings amongst both the school itself and the schools by their grade band. So principals are able to see, you know, where am I and my teacher stacking up based on the observations that we collected. So we set our principals with targets monthly, depending on the number of instructional days in the month and the grade band of the school being represented. We have certain quantities, for example, an expectation of 30 in a month, for example, for a high school. And so those expectations are, we actually communicate that mid-month and end-of-month, because we want to monitor our progress. We don't wait till 30 days to see how we're doing. We're going to communicate that out at the 15-day mark and the 30-day mark. And then we're collecting that, and we review that monthly with our team.
Thank you.
Mr. Grabowski, it's a really good question. The goal of the tool overall is to improve raider reliability. You want to get it right, you know, based on the rubric, especially when kids are involved. So, so outside of that, as Dr. Clamp shared, we have a whole process, which includes the required number of observations, as he eloquently put it, for principals. But the calibration walks are separate from that in that the end goal is to improve raider reliability.
All right, Ms. Stewart?
So, are you guys deciding which teachers are being assessed per school? Or is the principal deciding, and how is there?
That's a great question. So, on the organized facilitated classroom walkthroughs, the calibration walks, the principal and his team or her team decide which classrooms we go to. In some cases, it's based on time. So time of day, we may be in schools in the morning at this particular school, but in the afternoon at another school. So we're also looking at who's available, who's teaching during that time, who's not on a planning block, for example. During the school year, the principals decide, and they create really sophisticated learning walk schedules where they know who's going where, when, so that for many of them, they have an expectation that every teacher is observed, depending on the size of their school, very consistently. So each principal's a little bit different, because the size of their teams are different, and instructional coaches that provide those learning walk opportunities as well. But when we do the facilitated calibrated walk, the principal has the authority to decide between his team or her team what classrooms we're going in.
Okay. And so how do you, how do you know that the principal isn't providing you with specific teacher groups that they know will be more successful or that they would like to favor?
That's an expectation that novice teachers, as well as senior teachers, are included in those learning walks. So there's enough of us when we go. I mean, there could be 10 teams of three. So there could be 30 of us doing these learning walks, depending on the size of the school. So we hit, you know, depending on, again, the size of the faculty and the size of the school, in many cases, we can hit many of the teachers during that learning walk. In many cases, we can hit many of the teachers during that learning walk in that one visit.
So is the goal to have every teacher have a walkthrough every year?
More than one?
Yes, more than one.
More, yes, yes, ma'am, absolutely.
And it depends on their level of their contract. So induction teachers and teachers in their second year of formal evaluation, they're getting even more frequent walks. And then they're getting extended observation periods of time where the South Carolina 4.0 rubric is used to assess their teacher effectiveness.
So every classroom gets, gets touched?
Multiple observations, Ms. Jewett. And sometimes we walk into schools and say, show us the teachers where you have the most significant challenges, so that as a system, we can provide the level of support that is needed. If you're always showing me the best that you have, we don't necessarily know how to support centrally. And so Dr. Williams is behind me, Ms. Simmons has access to a microphone. She can talk a little bit how, from the learning community perspective, she manages this. Mrs. Simmons?
So I've been leading the elevations on since, what, July 1? And we've made a commitment to make sure that all of our schools, of the 14 that we serve, that they have the quality chance, opportunity to hear directly from CNI, ML, SED. It's a cross-section of the district who attends these meetings with us. I was telling Superintendent Huggins the other day, we had about 25 district staff. That's important because of the lens of our respective team associates. And so what you notice when you're in a classroom observing matters. That's how practice improves. When you can give the kind of feedback that immediately improves practice, that's where we see growth. That's where we see continuous improvement. And so we just culminated our first round of walkthroughs for all 14 schools last week. We will start that process again in February, March, to make sure that what we asked to see improvement in in the fall, we actually see it in the spring semester. And so we find this tool and this actual strategy to be invaluable to our work.
Ms. Jewett, I'm just, Dr. Williams, do you want to add anything from the middle school learning community?
It's fine. So, so great evening to you all. So one of the things that we've done is we've already had our initial calibration walks at the middle school level, because I'm kind of quick on the draw. And so what we've done, and what we're going to do before we go home for winter break, is we've gone back into each of our middle schools, and we've looked specifically at our ELA math and sixth grade science because those are our tested areas, number one. And number two, that goes back to the question that you asked. It gives us more of an opportunity to hone in specifically on those teachers. And then after the break, we'll go and see our science and social studies, and we'll get a chance to see our ELA and math again. And that's only because we got a sooner start than everyone else did regarding the calibration walks. But going back to what Dr. Clamp said, it's really, really crucial when we do those calibration walks and we kind of like calibrate on what we're seeing. Because now that we've gone back in a second time, we can see that we're all a lot more calibrated, and principals are actually able to see what we see, and we see what they see, and we can really give some good quality feedback to teachers. So that's the way we're handling that at the middle school level. And so we actually had some scheduled for next week, too, that had to reschedule, but we figured it wouldn't be a good time to go in because they're prepping to go out for winter break. So we're going to do those two after, and that's the ELA math and sixth grade science after winter break. And then, like I said, we'll go into all the science and social studies, and then circle back and do the ELA math and sixth grade science again.
That was going to be, my next question was timeline, so I think that's it.
Say it again?
Timeline was, so you answered it. Yeah, that's it, thank you.
Ms. Watley?
I just have one question, at least right now. Sometimes that changes. But I just am curious if parental input can trigger a walkthrough, or if that's a factor?
Good question. In terms of whether we do calibration or just walking through the classroom?
Yes, maybe both.
Absolutely. If, if, if a principal or assistant principal receives information that they're curious about, they'll absolutely go and investigate.
What about when, when, because I know sometimes parents come to trustees or, or email the superintendent. Does that ever trigger a calibration walkthrough?
Well, any communication we receive triggers a conversation. And so we validate that information, and we do our best to check if we need to check immediately or if we need to check with a conversation. Any type of communication, whether it be from a trustee or a parent or even a student, our principals and assistant principals are very serious about being curious about that information and ensuring there's validation to it.
I think Ms. Jewett, I think it was Ms. Jewett. Maybe we can talk some more offline, because sometimes I feel like, at least some of the times that I've observed in communication with people, there can be a conflict of interest there. And, and just for a matter of trust, establishing or restoring trust with, with parents and their concerns about what's happening. And how, in, in this vein, how about with like test scores or report cards with students? Does that ever trigger a calibration?
Sure, we, so Ms. Watley, what our principals have done, Dr. Clamp, if you don't mind, I'll just jump in, is, is they sort of know that they do know where their data are in regards to student outcomes. And so they've internally sort of tiered their, their faculty so that they know where they need to be providing the most support. So formative assessments, summative assessments, all those data are used to determine who needs to observe, when, where, and what kind of support teachers need as a result. This is the primary tool, though, as Mrs. Simmons and Dr. Clamp suggested, and Dr. Williams, that we utilize to determine where teachers are and how we can better support them, help kids.
I can add to that, too, Ms. Huggins, if it's okay. And so when we do those initial calibration walks, that's to calibrate, like Dr. Clamp explained and I explained as well. So now when we've gone, and when we're coming back through at the middle school learning community level, and we're doing that second round, we're looking specifically for teachers who need support. And we like to use that word support because I need support in certain things as well, because I'm not graded everything. And so when we walk back through that second time, we're now calibrated. We realize we're calibrated, so we're honing in specifically on teachers that need some additional support in schools and how we can provide that support.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Watley.
Ms. McKinney?
Thank you. So a question, do the teachers know prior to the visit that it's their day?
The ones that are getting observed, in most cases, no.
Okay.
So I say in most cases because there might be a need that we would need to let a teacher know, especially if it was a special education classroom or a space where visitors were to come in that might disturb the environment. If three people walk in, we want, there may be cases that we need to let them know. But in, in most cases, no, it's random. Random to them, not random to us, because there's been planning this, this undergone. And then that information's given directly to the principal so they can provide the feedback back to their teachers.
Good. So just for the record, I think this is a wonderful tool. I wish it had been around for longer, and, and I know it's difficult. So thank you for that. One question on terminology. On the slide with the high impact focus, one of the, it was either four or five elements that were watched was grouping students. What does that mean?
Yes, ma'am. So depending on the level, grouping is about understanding where students' academic proficiency and ability are.
Okay.
So when we go into a classroom, for example, in the early grades, we're expecting to see students grouped to support them in their, in their academic proficiency. So especially in classrooms where there may be a teacher's assistant or even a co-teaching environment, we've got students in small groups who are being provided support. And in other cases, students are being provided enrichment because their proficiency level exceeds standard. So it's really understanding specifically which students need to be grouped and how often they're grouped. There's also cases where obviously students are grouped for collaboration, so giving them a chance to be able to develop and work with one another. So we're also paying attention to the levels of students in those areas to ensure that that distribution's made equitably, while also giving a chance for student voice to be lifted. So it really depends on the grade band and the subject area. But it really challenges us to be curious if all we see is whole group instruction, because are we really hitting the needs of each and every individual student?
Right. Although, so my question is, for example, a high school calculus class, there's not going to be a whole lot of grouping.
Dr. Clamp, if I may, not, you're right, Mrs. McKinney. So inevitably, the assessors, and I, and I just asked to jump in because this is the work that I excitedly led for a really long time. The, the group tries to capture whether the students got the learning. That's the question. Did the students get the learning? And if not, is there a more effective way that the students can capture the learning or master the content? And so that's what we look to see. It might be appropriate for a lesson to be delivered whole group, or the, the meat of the lesson to be delivered a whole group. But if it's clear that students didn't actually master the learning because the, the content was so complex that the teacher never broke out in small groups to determine, ascertain, and to support, that could be the feedback that we provide to the students, to the teacher afterwards in consideration of how she might do that differently if she were to do it again. Does that make sense?
It does.
So it's not, the tool is not meant, and I want to make sure that the board knows this and the public, the tool is not meant to be a checklist. It's collectively, did kids get what they needed to get during the lesson? And if not, how might we provide support to the teacher to improve that when the lesson is delivered again, or a similar lesson? Great, great question.
Thank you. No, I think it's important that everyone knows this is feedback for student achievement.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
It's, and to just dovetail a little bit from what I was saying, it's really about learner conditions. Have we created the right condition for our students to thrive?
Awesome. Ms. Bailey?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. Okay, as I was listening, you said there's a specific timing for the walkthroughs to be done in, once in the fall and once in the springtime. And that's over the elementary, middle, and high school timeframe? Or does everybody have a different time?
A great question, Ms. Bailey. So there are two different ways, there are two different assessments. Today, we focused on the classroom walkthrough. But the state's system for evaluating, which is with the 4.0 system more formally, they do fall and spring observations. The classroom walkthrough can be used at any time during the year. As Ms. Simmons and Mr., and, and Dr. Williams alluded to, though, we try to get early on, into classrooms early on so we can identify where we might need support teachers. And then we follow that up in a few weeks to see if the support we've rendered has helped improve instruction. So with the state's formal system for evaluation, there's a fall and a spring. The state uses a set of standards. Those standards are what we use to build the classroom walkthrough tool, and we may use that tool at any point in the year. But again, most of our leaders are insisted on getting in early and following up at some point. It might be fall, winter, and two times in the spring. And that varies among schools, grade levels, et cetera. Does that make sense?
Yes, ma'am. And that brings me to my next question.
Yes, ma'am.
How can we, as trustees, be a part of that walk, those walkthroughs to see how they are implemented in each school in our district? Not, we don't have to do all of them. Like, when we plan to take a tour of a school during the school year?
Yes, ma'am.
Is it possible that we can actually see that walkthrough being implemented?
I appreciate your interest in that. Let's think about how we might do something like that and, and, and get back with you. Let us think about that, Ms. Bailey. Thank you for being interested, just so you can see the tool in action.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
And Dr. Temple?
Yeah, my colleagues have had, asked a lot of good questions. So, so just so I have this picture right. When a, when you all are doing this walkthrough, classroom walkroom in a school, all of the classrooms are observed, or?
Yeah, no, ma'am, yeah, no, ma'am. It, it depends on the, the size of the faculty, obviously, and the size of the rating team. But it's very possible for us to see at least a third or half of the, of the teachers during that timeframe because we're going to spend, the, the whole session is about two to three hours. But we're not in classrooms the whole time because there's a pre-meeting and a post-meeting.
Okay. So there's a lot of indicators here that you're looking at. So, so you're, you focused on just four of the indicators that you're looking at?
Actually, when we go in, when we were going in the middle school, we focused on two, didn't we? We focused just two in the middle school calibrations that we did this fall. So we use the data to, in, to inform us as to what area should we be looking for with opportunities to create support and growth.
And how did you choose the two indicators?
From the previous year's data. So we use the data, and then we use current data to help inform. And what the data has continued to validate is that these areas continue to be opportunities for us to improve. How we're creating opportunities for students to ask questions of themselves and of others, as well as the structure, the grouping, and the feedback of students. So we use the data from the previous walks to inform us as to which area do we have the opportunity for most growth.
Because you believe, for example, that questioning is, is one of the highest indicators for improving student achievement?
Yes, ma'am.
That's how you decide on the indicators?
Which is also validated in the research.
So do you rank these indicators?
That, that's a great, that's a great question, Dr. Temple. And as a system, what we've done, so we're talking about a lot of different things tonight, and the questions are really good. We've talked about calibrating with the CWT. We've talked about normal walkthroughs with the CWT, and we've talked about the state's formal process. So for calibration, they work together to choose with the principals, the areas. But as a system, we, we sometimes prioritize which indicators at what point of the year. So you might see classroom management, managing classroom, as an indicator that we focus on at the beginning of the year so that we are sure that there's systems in place for managing the behavior. But right away, we begin some of the indicators that we believe yield more positive student outcomes, like questioning, like delivering of content, like instructional strategies, those sorts of things.
So the choice of indicators that you might use in the fall might be different than those in the spring?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then I guess, I guess one of the other questions I had was, are charter and public-private schools using this classroom calibration walkthrough tool? Are they involved? And I'm thinking of the ones that, that CCSD authorizes.
It's a great question, Dr. Temple. We, we can't require that they do that. And so I can't speak confidently that they are. But they are on my list for my walkthroughs this year, all of our schools. I hadn't gotten to all of them yet, but it's my goal. So we can't require that. But I know the schools do rely on us for the formal process through the State Department, but the CWT, not as much.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, other trustees. You asked fabulous questions, and staff, well, thank you. Obviously, the staff gets a lot done.
We try, Ms. Lieber, and we thank you for your support very much.
Yeah, I absolutely think that this is a wonderful tool. I, I guess just something, something that just came to mind while we're talking because my, my, this trustees asked a lot of great questions is, when you find some excellence in teaching, are you bringing it back to maybe the education symposium? Which would be great to say, like, some videos on how to deliver education?
That's a, that's a great question, Ms. Lieber. And again, we developed this CWT quite a while ago, but started using it as part of the, the board's guardrail. So I can speak to that, Dr. Clamp, that we have chosen teachers to do videos, model videos, based on some of our walkthroughs before. And some of those same teachers have presented at the CES and other. And more importantly, they've served sort of as mentor teachers to some teachers that might need support in certain areas. So we have used it. Principals use it more internally for that purpose, to, to sort of pair up teachers than not. Great question.
Yeah, I, I see CCSD being kind of the leader in, in South Carolina for many things, and this would be one of them. And even having a video collage of, of teachers that are just outperforming their, their peers. And I continue to go back to the factors when I see elements of my military experience and then my corporate experience also shining through with CCSD. I'm, I'm heartwarming that you guys are actually right on top of it. And my, my last question, I was mentoring, and you kind of asked for it, that you, these teachers, you discover mentors and possibly align them with teachers that need it. So, next topic.
Thank you, Ms. Lieber. And before we, before Ms. Watley, you, you go on to the next. I do want to recognize one of our student cabinet members. Mrs. Lieber's taught us a lot about student voice, as she's worked with us on SEC. And Ms. Sinai Branton, Ms. Branton, would you stand up and be recognized? Ms. Branton is a senior at RV Stall, and she is on our superintendent's cabinet.
Huggins? Also the presenter at the State of the Schools, wasn't she?
No, ma'am, but they favor quite a bit. They're both... N- n- no ma'am, but they favor quite a bit. They're both-
And they're both at Stall.
Brilliant young women who are scholars at Stall. And Ms. Branton actually reached out to me, looking, I don't want to embarrass her. She's already very involved, FBI, DECA, communities and schools. She even played Powderpuff, I believe. And uh, she actually reached out to me looking for other leadership opportunities. And so we'll highlight our student cabinet in January. We had a lot going on here at the holidays with double meetings on the same day. But I did want to recognize Ms. Branton for being here, um, and observing the board's governance in action. So, thank you again.
Thank you, Ms. Branton. Uh, with that, we will, and thank you for joining us this evening. With that, we will move on to item four, Audit and Finance Committee. I will hand that over to Ms. Bailey.
Good evening. We have for Audit and Finance Committee review information, six information items. Um, Mr. Prentice, do you want to do them individually? Or do you want to just lump them all six together and have the um, trustees ask questions as needed?
I, I'm happy to run through them all and then take any questions that might arise.
Okay.
If that works for the committee. Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, so we had the six information items. Uh, the first is our typical monthly capital projects report for the month of October. Uh, nothing particular to note there, but Ms. Costello did indicate that our quarterly collections uh, had exceeded our 2% growth projections. Uh, so that was good news. We continue to see our revenues exceed our projections year over year um, for the sales tax program. Second item, we had our FY 2025 uh, financial audit presentation. Um, there were no findings in the audit this year, uh, which is good news, unmodified opinion. And um, there was a note that due to the delay in the federal government releasing guidance uh, for the circular to the State Department, uh, the audit is presented as a draft, um, and we have until the second week of January now uh, to submit it. Uh, we just got that guidance this week. Uh, so they'll be applying that and finishing um, the overall submission uh, of the audit. And uh, we'll get that all submitted as we're required to. Uh, but the attached financial statement presentation and the actual financial statements are included um, on the, the item for board review. Uh, we'll also get you printed copies uh, once those are available. Uh, we had our internal audits. Uh, we had presentations on expanded learning, uh, Department of Exceptional Children, planning and facilities use and real estate. Um, so we are really making some good progress on the completion of the internal audit plan that was approved by the board. Uh, met with our staff last week and we'll be wrapping up uh, the last few audits as we get into the uh, last six months of the fiscal year, starting in January, uh, with the goal to come back to the board with a new risk assessment and a revised internal audit plan for the upcoming four-year cycle. Uh, now that we've been through two years of the four-year cycle, just to refresh that based on the, on work that's been completed thus far. Uh, we have all the monthly financial reports for the month of October, including our uh, newly standard Head Start monthly financial report, uh, our purchases and contracts over 250,000. And also included for information of the committee and the board, uh, an internal strategic plan that's been adopted by the Financial Services Division uh, that commenced July 1 of this year and runs through June 30th of 2028. Uh, we came together in a workshop and created a plan to guide our work on a lot of the themes and goals. And that plan incorporate the use of AI, the development of standard operating procedures uh, that are consistent for the organization and accessible uh, through modern tools such as AI, um, as well as training and mentorship programs for all of the financial functions throughout the system, um, as well as customer service and key performance indicator tracking. So we have a team of folks responsible for the goals and objectives in that plan, um, and they're providing quarterly updates, uh, the second quarter of which will begin to be posted publicly on the CCSD website.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions? I will start with Ms. Temple. Okay, um, Ms. Roberson?
Yes, thank you. Um, Mr. Clamp, um, excuse me, um, Prentice. This was the 150-page um, statement. Uh, my question is, do you know what specific expenditures drove the decline in the general fund?
So the, the overall year-over-year in the general operating fund was an increase. Can you point to a particular page? I'd be happy to look at it for you.
No, I don't have a particular page. Said the, the general fund declined by 14.3 million. So I'm just wondering, you know, was there, what drove that?
So that was, I, I understand what you're speaking of now. So that was actually the use of some of that SRS sustainability fund balance. Um, we had budgeted $20 million of SRS sustainability fund balance to help with the implementation of weighted student funding, and we only used a portion of what was set aside. Uh, so as we've spoken in the past, we rolled that unused fund balance forward to FY 26. So that, that's what that number is reflecting, um, is the use of that fund balance uh, that was budgeted.
Okay. And then the, this report also talked about the unassigned fund balance, um, yeah, um, is 8%, and I know that that meets our board policy of 8%. Um, can we talk about best practices? Um, is it time for us to review our board policy and increase that to 16%, which is um, what we, what we know as the um, best practice for um, GFOA?
So our board policy does reflect all-in 16%. Um, and so the way that's presented includes the um, current year and future year committed expenditures to the SRS sustainability fund balance, the unassigned, the amounts assigned for prepaid. Um, so the minimum state requirement is the 8%. Um, but the board policy does reflect the 16%. I just don't remember the policy reference. It's two months equivalent of operating expenditures uh, from the budget.
So the board policy does say 16%, I thought it said 8%?
Yes ma'am. State, state, um, State Department of Education requires the 8.3 and board policy requires 16.6.
Okay, alright, okay. Um, and, and I also saw that uh, 68% of our revenue is coming from local resources. Um, do you have, or have you thought about um, any vulnerability um, that could be associated with property tax um, volatility or any type of revenue shortfall? Because we are getting the bulk of our revenue from local um, taxes.
So that, that is an interesting configuration uh, for CCSD in particular, but it's a major component of our long-range model. Um, I, state revenues tend to be more volatile, from my view, than the local property tax base in Charleston, just because of the ability uh, for the General Assembly to go in and make changes to the way in which those revenues are collected and remitted. For example, right now, uh, there's a um, study that the Revenue and Fiscal Affairs Office has been commissioned uh, by the General Assembly to review the weights that are assigned um, and, you know, weighted pupil units to determine the distribution of funding. And so things like that can change the distribution of state revenues. Um, and we're very conservative in our projection of state revenues, because typically uh, you see at least a minimum hold harmless type situation. Uh, with property taxes though, in Charleston, there's so much stored value uh, in our property ba, tax base because of the uh, conditions of Act 388. So because at the reassessment point every five years, property values can only go up in terms of their taxable uh, value by 15%. Uh, largely, the properties that are on the rolls are um, their fair market value is in significant excess of the actual taxable value as a result. Um, so we look at, um, working with Charleston County, our assessable transfers of interest, meaning a property that changes hands uh, year over year and therefore is now assessed or, you know, taxed at the new uh, purchase price, and look at those things to determine how many properties uh, are being taxed at their actual fair market value compared to those uh, that are subjected to uh, fair market value uh, that's different, uh, therefore higher than the actual taxable value. Um, and, and the collection rate too, in Charleston County is the highest in the state. Uh, so we, we see around 98% collection uh, in real property taxes. So even in a downturn, economic downturn, you would see uh, through both mortgage and direct pay circumstances, um, you know, i- in a foreclosure situation, uh, the bank paying property taxes at or above uh, the current level, because if that property was foreclosed uh, and the value changed as a result of that transfer, in most cases, the actual property taxes do would go up. Um, so that, that's a good situation for Charleston. That's not the circumstance throughout the rest of the state, but it does track somewhat uh, with our index of taxpaying ability, because some of those less wealthy counties uh, that have values that are closer to uh, their actual um, taxable value are the ones that are getting a significant portion of their revenues uh, from the state and not relying as heavily on property taxes.
Okay. Uh, and these are a lot of reports. Um, did you, did you go over the WSF report already, just now?
Uh, not in detail, but that, that was included in the items that I referenced, so I'd be happy to answer any questions there.
Uh, yeah, I have, um, the, the schools that have already, and you may have, I've not had an opportunity to review the Audit and Finance um, meeting. So, um, forgive me if I ask questions that you all have already answered um, during that committee meeting. But there were some schools that have already used um, all of their funds that um, they have an, a, a negative. Um, what, what are we doing with, with, with that?
So, and I appreciate that question. We did discuss that a little bit in the committee meeting. Uh, the majority of those are tied to the uh, encumbrances for salaries and benefits to be paid through the rest of the year. Um, and so in some circumstances, in open enrollment, people would make a change if there's a position, for example, in a school's plan that previously had employee-only benefits and they changed over to employee plus spouse plus children. Um, you know, the, the benefits amount for us would go up. And so we're reconciling those with the school. There's only a couple uh, that actually have true overages. Um, and we have some contingency funds set aside, as we did in the last year, uh, to address those. So we, we told schools that if they manage their plan and the only overage that they saw was a result of a benefit selection change, uh, that they'll be held harmless from that. And we can say confidently at this time that those fit within that mold. A couple of those on this report uh, that are showing overages uh, in a, a little bit more uh, than, you know, the 10 to $12,000 range are a result of some of the encumbrances that are posted but haven't been cleared as payroll is processed. I'll give you an example. Uh, this report was run on, I believe, the 15th. Um, and so, excuse me, it's 11:10. And so as of 11:10, we had already run the payroll processing for the 11:15 payroll. Uh, and so those expenditures had posted, but the encumbrance hadn't been decreased uh, to reflect the uh, amount that was paid out that payroll. So we do that at the 30th at the end of the month, uh, and we reconcile all of those monthly. Uh, we just found it to be more beneficial to include uh, the encumbrances for analytical purposes, so that it was understood that uh, the budgets weren't uh, largely still available to be uh, used on a strategy.
Okay. Thank you, um, Ms. Bailey.
Alright, Mr. Holland Shad?
Uh, no, thank you. I'm fine. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Mr. Prentice.
Ms. Lieber?
I, I don't have anything this time.
Okay. Ms. Pam? Ms. Watley? Ms. Jewett?
I just have a couple of questions. Um, so the, in two of the documents, there's an accounting, um, budget from last month of 3.1 million.
Which, can you point to which one you're looking at? I'd be happy to pull it up.
I have to go through. It's from last month's over, overages.
Ah, yes, okay. And which one in particular are you looking at?
It just, it was the graph that said accounting budget overage of one, uh, two, 21.3 million. It's significantly larger than any of the other bars.
You looking at the um, WSF report?
No, it's one of the accounting ones. Let me find it.
Which, um, which number is it under?
I mean, there were so many documents. I think it's under financial updates. And it said November. I'll look for it, but the other one was, it, it's also um, 188 for management services, also accounting services in the um, financial summary.
So that is, um, that's, there's an encumbrance there. Um, so the, the account's not over by that amount. Um, and that's probably a purchase order uh, that needs to be redistributed. Um, I see what you're talking about on that one. I'll, I'll check into that one in particular. Um, and this was really just for transparency purposes uh, based on the resolution adopted by the board in the budget this year to show um, the accounts that we have that we're reconciling. Um, and so we go through every month and we're working with the responsible parties for these accounts to cure uh, these balances and make transfers from other available sources. One thing that I found is when we weren't reporting on this consistently and doing a monthly reconciliation process, you know, somebody might have an overbudget in one account knowing that they had funds in another account and they weren't being as proactive to cure those variances. And so by implementing this, we've kept those overbudget accounts very closely managed this year. And so this report uh, is tremendously shorter than it's been in years past, uh, because it's being shared out there and people want to make sure that they get off that list.
Okay.
But I'll look at that particular one for you.
That'd be great. And then I found it, it's in, it's actually the link that goes directly to our publics. Um-
Ah, okay. Let me go to that for you.
It's the link that goes to the public records and it, if you hover over the line that says accounting services, it says 21.3 million and-
Is it uh, the over 250 dashboard?
Yeah.
Okay. So that is um, the uh, Accounting Office uh, Department, if you will, Cost Center, um, for procurements over 250,000, and that is associated with our charter school payments. Um, so they do all the encumbering and processing of all of our charter school payments um, and distribute those monthly based on the distribution projections. They true them up at the 45th day, 90th day and 135th day. Um, and they enter requisitions to create a purchase order and then adjust it and liquidate it every month. And so it, it shows up under there. If you go to that tab five, uh, the detail is on there. You can see under the um, sort for accounting, uh, and it'll have the various different charter school names associated with it. I know that's a bit of an odd categorization, but that's what that's associated with.
Perfect, thank you.
Yes ma'am.
Okay, Mr. Grabowski?
Yeah. And, and, and Ms. Rory, I'm bringing in on this one. Um, as we look at our capital projects and, you know, we're in this inflationary, you know, construction environment coming ahead. And I, and I think it's really as we're, you know, we're reporting on phase five, you know, the one cent sales tax, and we look at all these projects. Are we getting close to that period on our contingency where we have to start looking at what's been addressed in this phase five? You know, and potentially running into restructuring those plans?
Not yet, sir.
Excuse me?
Not yet, sir.
Not yet. So now, as we go into phase, potential phase six, as we see all the various counties identifying all their big projects for a proposed sales tax, you know, as we look at this process coming forth, can you just kind of like, give me an idea when we're gonna start looking at what we perceive could be the big projects for phase six? And when we're gonna start talking about it?
So we're in the process of putting together the Capital Master Plan. Uh, the foundation of that was the community input that we received this past year between February and May. We held 17 community meetings, received 1,200 or so comments. Uh, that summary was provided to board members on the 14th of November. Uh, so if you look back at your board updates, you'll see a summary of that survey. Uh, that is a portion of the Capital Master Plan. Uh, in addition to the facility condition assessment that was recently completed, um, evaluating the projects that we already have on the list that are unfunded, looking at the enrollment projections. We'll pull all that together for the Board of Trustees uh, in the spring of this coming year. And then we will develop a projects list that we'll propose to the board for the referendum, and that projects list will come to you all in July of next year. So in July of next year, that's when you'll be provided uh, the list of projects that we're proposing.
When, how are we uh, provided with that data?
S- so, we're developing a cap, Capital Master Plan.
No, in November.
November of next year.
It was in the court update, November 14th?
November 14th of this year, I provided a one-page summary on that survey.
But that, that was community, that was the community input.
Community input.
Right.
Uh, through the survey process and a meeting process. That information that you got on the 14th of November will be incorporated in the Capital Master Plan. That'll be provided to you all in the spring of this coming year. Again, that master plan will include facility condition assessment, enrollment projections, unfunded projects and that community input uh, for your consideration. And then from that master plan, we'll develop a list of projects that we're proposing for uh, the referendum, and that list will come to you in July of next year.
We can resend that report this week, Ms. Brantley, and I'll make sure it gets in there, Mrs. Jewett.
And, and from that July meeting, Mr. Rory, or Mr. Prentice, then we start getting serious about committing to these type of projects. then we start getting serious about committing to these type of projects and the funding that we're going to need to cover that from sales tax.
Right. The, the July presentation, which will be the projects list, will also include a draft referendum, the draft referendum language that the board will approve.
And the next phase will be for another five years?
Six, six years.
Next, next years for the six years. So what we will be looking at, capital projects that we anticipate to start in 2028.
The, the program will run from 2029 through 2034. However, as we've done in the past, if the referendum is successful, we look to borrow money to start the projects early. So the projects could begin as early as January of 2027, even though the referendum doesn't run, doesn't actually garner revenues until 2029.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And just going back with all the audits that we were provided with and all you're discussing, I noticed that, you know, the statement was made that we didn't find any findings or at this point with the drafts, so there were no real red flags that came out. But outside of the formal findings, did you find or note any areas where you, we should be strengthening our internal? And, and what I'm looking at is, you know, the wraparound services, you know, the grants, you know, and capital projects, especially in this inflationary and, you know, construction environment.
So our internal audit process has touched on a lot of those areas this year. Capital programs went through one, Mr. Broery, was that about six months ago? I'm trying to remember when that wrapped up. It was one of the first ones that we did. And in the presentation documents that was presented audit and finance this past week in areas like expanded learning and some of those, you know, other areas of the system that have financial procedures that are not necessarily part of our central financial work, we found areas that we need to create more consistency. So working with them direct to those findings, but also as part of our creation of system-wide SOPs to try to bring siloed standard operating procedures back into a standard fold, we'll be working to train and ensure that people are following those more consistently. So those internal audits will cover all areas of the system that touch fiscal and major high-risk operational areas of concern. And then we'll put the matrix on the agenda every time we present an update, so the board can track the resolution of those items as they're working towards completion. I know some of the ones that were on there tonight have completion deadlines as far out as June, so you may see those slowly evolve towards being rectified over the next several months.
I mean, because from my practice with our current administration, I, I highly, you know, applaud you for the success that you've been able to do internally, but I always get kind of concerned when I get an audit of such a size and there's not a single red flag in it. I mean, it's a billion-dollar budget. So anyway. But I, I commend you and I have full faith in what you're doing. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Temple?
I just wanted to ask, with July 2026 being the time that we see the list of projects in the referendum, are we going to have enough time to really promote that in the community? Because we are at a point where we've done a lot of building and facilities and, and, you know, we need to keep up with the repairs and, and also the enhancements that our students deserve. I'm just concerned that there's not much time between the end of July and the elections in November.
I understand your point, ma'am. I'm just basing it on history. This is our fourth sales tax program. The last three were completed on the same timeline. The last three sales taxes, including the last one that I did, was under the same timeline. Master plan in the spring, projects list in July, referendum in November. I understand the point. We'll keep a close eye on it. But we have been successful in the last three.
That, the buzz is that, and we're hearing of other referendums coming before the public, so of course, I think this is the most important.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, any other questions?
Quick question.
One follow-up.
Mr. Hollingshed?
Yeah, I understand what Jeff is saying, but the circumstances, I think, and I will, I will wait till spring, it'll be a lot different. We had the chambers involvement in promoting our referendum. This time we're going at it alone. So I think we don't need to be, I guess, overwhelmed in joy. There's a lot of work that still has to be done, like Dr. Temple says. And I think, you know, we need to address it at that time a little bit more in detail.
Thank you.
Ms. Bailey?
Ms. Jewett, and then Ms. Roberson.
Thank you.
Just following up on Keith's question, how are we assessing the future population, the forecasted populations for this?
How much time do I have to answer? So I'll, I'll try to, I'll try to keep it brief. So we do a number of things to analyze the enrollment. We use our historical numbers. We run those cohorts to see what the projected numbers would, would be. We have discussions with our municipal partners to see what projects, housing projects are being planned and executed. Projects are actually underway. We actually go meet with developers to see what their timeline is. This work, and then, then it's followed up with meetings with the principals, which are underway now for the enrollment projections for next year. When we finish the enrollment projections for next year, we'll then update, as we do annually, our five-year, our five-year projections. The, the school input as part of that, as part of this upcoming year's numbers is important. They on occasion identify things that we're not aware of, so that one-on-one discussion with the principals is important. They know their, they know their communities. I feel very comfortable with our projections in the past, and I'll continue to do so. Our variance was extremely low in plus or minus the enrollment projections this past year. I think we've got a really good process in place to know what, what's coming on down the road. Obviously, the nature of the market plays into it. We've had programs that were promised for years that never, never came through. Some like, as I brought up before, Lone Savannah took 20 years before it actually started moving. So we do our best to keep an eye on those on a case-by-case basis.
Ms. Roberson?
And Mr. Prentice, I'm going to go back to the Witty Student Formula. I thought with that and, and probably other reports as well, I thought that the overrides were turned off. Is, can anyone just go in and override and continue to spin, spin, spin?
No, ma'am. So this is, this is an aggregated report that shows the sum of all object codes across the location. So in these cases, what I was referring to, that we're, we're driving the overages were the encumbrances for benefits and salaries associated with positions. So they would have to have an amount in a non-salaries account to be able to enter a requisition to get a purchase order for something they were purchasing. This is really just a monthly reconciliation associated with salaries and benefits only. So there's no ability to go in and do an override if there's not appropriate authority in an individual account. But this is just the summation of all of the object codes across that cost center rolled up through our reporting services for the, the purpose of showing it to the board, which of course is just being driven by the benefits changes and payroll encumbrances that I referenced.
Okay.
Okay, Ms. Lieber?
My question, whether superintendent or Mr. Prentice, that capital improvements referendum, what kind of marketing budget do we have and do we have a marketing plan?
So we, as an entity, can't promote the referendum once it is approved by the Board of Trustees, once that resolution is adopted. And so we can provide information to the public upon request, factual information. But we can't run any type of campaign or marketing associated with it since it's a ballot question. So it'll be something that, you know, our community partners may choose to provide information or advocacy for, you know, just like much would happen with the, the county's referendum. But in terms of staff, you know, we're bound to not involve ourselves in those activities, particularly once the resolution is adopted away from information only.
What about the educational foundation?
So I believe they would be restricted from doing such as well, just because of the political activities component there.
Yeah, I was just thinking about what happened at 526 and what they were trying to do to market that, so.
Yeah, this, this, you know, has happened in the past. I know that maybe the chamber's been a good partner and some other regional entities that have an interest in ensuring quality schools and quality roads and all of those types of things. But we'll certainly put information on a page, I would imagine, on our website that would provide information on the approved resolution, the projects on the resolution, maybe the cadence in which the projects would be approached and all of the history on all the successful referendums and project completion that we've had over the years, that would be a resource for people to be pointed to.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Prentice.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that concludes all questions.
All right, Ms. Bailey, thank you very much.
Okay, we have, we also have three action items on here.
Well, with audit and finance, we don't vote.
Those were unanimous, so.
Yeah, we voted in the committee and sent it to the regular board meeting.
Mrs. Watley, before we move on, we had another student cabinet member come in, Grant Montique. I think he's here. I think he's involved in some apps with Mr. Prentice, actually, the IT committee. You recognize Grant?
I sure do. We met with him earlier today.
Yes, and he is a wildcat at West Ashley High School. We're glad to have you here, Grant, then to be recognized. Let's give you a round of applause. I'm sorry, Ms. Watley.
Oh, no, thank you. Thank you very much. With that, we'll go on to item five, which is the policy. Mr. Grabowski?
We have three policy items tonight coming from legal service. Together, they do two things. They bring us into alignment with the updated state law on unencumbered time, and they modernize our technology and AI policies, so staff has a clear guidance moving forward. All three items are here for the committee of the whole for us to review, and if we're comfortable to advance the three to tonight's board meeting. I guess we'll start off with item A, which is policy GL, GCLE, the unencumbered time. And Ms. Watley, you'll have to guide me on how you want to handle this, but, you know, it appears that state law has been updated to require school nurses to be guaranteed 30 minutes of unencumbered time each day. So do you want to have discussion on this? I mean, the motion is to move this forward to the board for tonight, but do you want to open it up for discussion on this?
I'll go ahead and second it, and then you can chair the discussion.
That's the motions to move this on, and I guess, is there any discussion regarding this policy? Hearing none. You want me to bring it up for a vote?
Sure.
I will bring the motion up for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we will move that on to the board for tonight's discussion. Item B, which is GBEBDIJNDBIJKA. This is the AI and Existing Tech Policy. It coordinates and updates the three existing policies. One's Acceptable Terms of Technology, Technology Acceptable Use, and Technology Resources Selection and Adoption. And I, I bring this up to the board in the sense of this reminds me of the days when computers first came into the district or new software came into the district. This is really just about how we're going to use this. This really isn't curriculum items, which will be later discussed at, you know, at Strategic Ed. This is really just the introduction and setting up the privacy, the data. So the motion is to advance these revised policies to tonight's meeting. Do I have a second? Any discussion? And Ms. Temp, Dr. Temple?
I just have one question. When I read through this, I saw a statement that said CCSD Instructional Use Gen I Technologies Guidelines. So I'm wondering, is, is there a document that's named that?
Generative AI?
It's on a line.
It's, it's in G E E B D. There's a mention here of the CCSD Instructional Use of Gen I Technologies Guidelines. And I was wondering, is that a report, is that a plan or guideline, set of guidelines that have already been developed?
They call it that at the Citadel as well, and as well as Tradentech. So I think that's just the general, but.
I didn't know if it was its own entity or it's.
It'll be a, it'll be a set of guidelines that'll assist us in implementing the use of the tools in the classroom.
They're not developed yet.
Well, we're going to get recommendations, but no, not yet fully, because we're still going to be vetting the, the tools that we would use and we'll bring along teachers and staff to help us assist in identifying those appropriately.
Ms. Roberson?
No questions.
Mr. Hollingshed?
No questions.
Any other questions from any board members? And then I would like to bring the motion up to move, to move this item on to the board meeting tonight for, you know, further. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, this one moves on. The final one is, this is the one that's more interesting to me, is the new policy, AI Literacy and Acceptable Use of Generative AI. This is a new standalone policy that sets overreaching frameworks for how CSC, CCSD will approach generative AI. And this, I think, as I see it, this is just going to be a work in process for a long time. And so we'll be having a lot of discussion on, on this one. But nevertheless, I think it's a good frame from what I heard from staff into, once again, setting the foundations and getting this going. So I'd like to make a motion to move this forward to the board for general approval.
Second.
And then I'll open it up for discussion. Dr. Temple?
Yeah, I, I gave feedback to staff on this policy and still feel strongly about it. The thing that, that I'm concerned about in this policy is that there's a list of all these different entities of, of AI. And to me, that's not policy. To me, that list seems to be something that could change, that, you know, now we have ChatGPT, and we got Claude, we got, you know, who knows what's coming next. So it seems to me that that list of all those different entities should be like in an admin piece to this policy.
Administrative rule. Part of the guidelines.
So we looked into that when we were doing our, our policy review. We do have, there's 11 other policies that have definition sections. And I understand where you're coming from there. I think these are the highest level, you know, definable capitalized terms that will kind of parse their way through all of the, the AI context that we'd be looking at. And I understand, like, when you look at line 20 with generative AI, artificial intelligence, where it lists, you know, foundation models, including ChatGPT, Gemini, Claude, Meta, et cetera, and it references, references and others. Obviously, those could change in name, type, and scope over time. But the definitions are really just to, you know, give background and context to other components of the policy that are referenced. So it's very specific as to what those things are. And we looked at our other policies that have definitions and the way the South Carolina Code of laws is structured as well. And that's a pretty common component of the actual policy or the statute, to have that definition section for highest-level capitalized terms.
I think that with this developing so quickly, we're going to be coming back. All we need is two or three new things, and we're going to have to just keep reviewing this policy. Where if we think the policy's have about what we're going to do is, is fine. I think it's very good, but it just, you know, in my opinion, I would move it to an admin.
Administrative rule.
An AR rule, yeah. Whatever you want to call it. They've called it, through the years, it's been called different things, but that's, that would be.
Dr. Temple, can you use your microphone? I can't hear you. I'm sorry. She hates that microphone.
Yeah, it's just my opinion that I just think we, we would be more efficient with the policy itself is really good. But I think having that list in a AR, what did you call it? Administrative rule, we just keep it cleaner for right now. That's my opinion.
Ms. Ms. Roberson?
Yes. I actually agree with Ms. Grabowski and Dr. Temple. So my notes are, I think this is a good start to this policy. I think it's going to be an ongoing process for a while because this is a lot and it's new across the state. For me, right now, I do, I do like the definitions because it is new to a lot of folks and parents need to understand the different categories. So I do like that. I too am interested in looking at the administrative rules, seeing a version of a draft of that, Mr. Grabowski, so that we can see exactly how it will be executed. I think that is important. I also think that I would like to see a little more language in the policy. Um, I also think that I would like to see a little more language, um, in the policy as it relates to, um, parental rights, and if parents have a right to opt their kids out of using AI, um, in the classroom. Um, I also would like to see a little more language relating to, um, SPED. And if, um, I think there's like, in the previous, the, that, I think there's a sh- short line in there about, um, I E Ps and five oh fours. Uh, but, you know, will teachers be able to use, um, AI to develop five oh fours and, and, um, um, I E Ps, I, I think we, that, that needs to be a conversation with the policy committee as well as, um, um, staff. Uh, I would like to see a little bit more language about the M L L population, um, and, you know, how we will frame that, um, frame AI when it comes to, you know, the language, um, barriers. And, uh, I also would like to see a little bit more, um, about the deep fakes protocols um, in this whole, um, development process. And some of these things may not be able to be codified in the policy, and that's why I'm look, would like to see a first draft of the, um, administrative rule to see how we would execute it. Some things will go over there, um, instead of being codified in the policy. And Ms. Grabowski, um, as our liaison, I would like for you to consider, um, talking with, um, staff to maybe, um, create an AI governance committee, because I think, um, this is going to be a lot, and maybe putting together, um, an AI governance committee to, um, really unpack some of these things and keep up with what's going on to work with the IT department, maybe have, you know, different, um, departments as a part of this, um, governance committee to, um, help put this, um, AI policy together.
So we appreciate that feedback, Mrs. Roberson. Many of the things that you referenced there would be more appropriate in an admin rule. As you know, policies are typically, uh, broad, um, in, in scope. Um, and then, just like in the classroom, uh, the, the comparison between goals and objectives. So any of those things would be more appropriate for an admin rule, and I'm proud that, uh, Mr. Prentice and, uh, Dr. Clamp have a, have a team that consists of a variety of stakeholders, including parents, teachers, and school leaders, and others who are helping sort of guide this work already, because as you noted, it is rather complex. So we appreciate the feedback. Uh, the, um, the chiefs and deputy have, have captured that, and, uh, Mr. Grabowski will certainly keep you advised in the board in our weekly updates on our work.
Thank you.
Mr. Hollingshed?
I'm sorry. It's just a learning process. I'm just gonna wait and develop. Thank you, though.
And, and I, uh, and I think staff should take into account everything that's been said, you know, by all the trustees, because I think they all raised some really good points. And, and to Ms. Roberson's, um, request, I, I have asked that, uh, Dr. Clamp and Mr. Prentice add me to the, the new list so that I can at least attend their meetings and report back to the board as how this government's committee is moving forth. Because I agree, this is just going to be, this is really just a basis, and we need to get started with something. Um, and there's, it's only for the first reading tonight, but I would ask staff to, you know, review what was discussed by Ms. Roberson, Dr. Temple, and the rest of the trustees, because I think it's, they're, all their points are right on point, so and, and we can address it at the next policy meeting, and then before the board, before the second meeting. Anyway, so with that, any further discussion from any trustee? Uh, Ms. Lieber?
Um, yeah, I think these are great. It's exciting. Um, C C S D leads the way, obviously, in the state, so at least I believe that to be true. Um, obviously, I want to be on the governance committee. I look forward to not just the student leaders, but some of the other students with that might have a, a bend toward AI. Um, you, you kind of have to, like, put your imagination hat on when you start looking at what AI brings. And one of the things, of course, that I often thought about is, you know, the data that you're inputting into these systems, and then the data that's output. How do you protect the kids to retain that information for future possibly data mining? Because it's kind of essential when you're, you're kind of given this, this platform of what students will ask these things and the output that it's provided. So just something to think about. And the other thing is how to protect education, you know, having, like, it's, there's probably some higher technology, like a VPN, as far as like, hey, I'm now giving you a password to go onto this virtual screen where you're actually accessing the, um, the AI tools. Some other things, um, a- and I'm going to stare a little bit of thunder from a public comment in the future. So, um, one of those is also, uh, as an example, like, uh, analysis between students and those who choose not to use AI and those who choose to use AI, and to make sure that there's some fairness when AI is brought into the education system, if that makes sense. And then, um.
It does. It does. In fact, uh, some folks con- contacted me today about just that. So, yes.
All right. And then I guess another thing would be, again, not knowing how rich these platforms are, but, um, especially, uh, personally identified information. You know, as students put their information, put, ask questions, they might be revealing more information than they should.
Sure.
So I don't, that, obviously, this is going to be a very complicated process. So.
Ms. Wally?
Just one quick comment. Um, just as, uh, we move forward with it, um, I, I personally think, uh, having like a fact-checking AI, um, protocol, because, uh, it, it, it is prompted to be very, very helpful, sometimes a little too helpful. And, uh, sometimes the information that it gives is, um, um, not correct. So definitely, um, you know, even with our own work, we always want to go in and check it and get a, a outside set of eyes to look at it, just to make sure that whatever guidance, um, students are getting, that it's, um, guiding in the right way.
Right way. Thank you, Ms. Bailey.
Ms. McKenny? Ms. Stewart?
No, I, I was just, more than anything, I'd like to see it a little more comprehensive. It's very vague right now. Um, so that's.
I, I did.
And I understand that that's.
I did find it interesting, Ms. Superintendent, today, in talking to some wonderful seniors, and I put that question to them, whether they used it, and they all kind of looked at me kind of sheepishly, not really, not this and everything. But then, one of the principals I was sitting next asked them, because we had raised the question about Blue Books, and the principal asked them, so how many of you can write in script? And only two admitted to out of the four, and so it is kind of an interesting, yeah, it's all.
Indeed, it is.
But anyway, um, let's, let's move on. Um, with that being said, I would like to, oh, Ms. Bailey, I, I apologize.
Yeah. I just want, well, I don't have a question, I have a statement. As this progresses, I want to see more, um, language that protects our youngest children with this AI, so that they're not taken advantage of.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey, for that.
No further disque- discussion, and I would like to bring the motion up to move it to the board for tonight, for further discussion, or, or action, further action. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it moves on, and that's policy. Oh, Ms. Temple, Dr. Temple, Dr.
On feedback, I want to see the feedback into the policy before we move it to second, because I'm, I'm concerned that that comes up for a second meeting doesn't look any different than what.
It, it still hasn't had its first reading yet, though.
Well, that's, that's why I'd ask staff really to work with me for the next policy meeting, so I can come back and report to you even before the second reading as to what we came up with. I really would hope to do that, so that we would have so. And then to give the superintendent some opportunity to talk, but I agree, I think they need to get that, and we'll see what happens after the next policy meeting.
And we, we've already started to work on a.
Right.
We can transition the language to it, an administrative rule, but it, you know, we'll, we're in the process of that with the team. It's a lot. This is a lot.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Grabowski.
We'll, we'll move on to item six, other business. The, um, item six A, naming of facilities, Latson Primary Library Naming. Um, yeah, sorry, I'm clicking on the wrong thing here. Um, this is, I'm going to hand this over to Ms. Vanessa Denny. Sorry, Ms. Denny, I, uh, did not catch your eyes before I called on you.
No worries. There wasn't a microphone on the side of the room, but we've got one now.
Yeah.
Um, so the trustees, you'll see that you have, uh, these documents and executive content. Um, the Latson community has asked that we maintain, um, anonymity for now. They'd like to make a special announcement should the board approve this naming recommendation at their centennial. Um, and you could read the background. If I share more, I will be giving away the surprise potentially.
Okay. With that, um, we have a motion, um, the motion to advance to the December eighth, twenty twenty-five board meeting for the motion to consider of the naming committee for the Latson Primary Library.
Great, Ms. Watley. That's perfect.
Yep.
Check on it.
Um, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And so that, that moves forward. And then, um, item six B, small women minority business enterprise, the SWMBI report originator, Mr. Uh, Daniel Prentice.
Yes, ma'am. So this is our annual update to the, um, Small Women Minority Business Enterprise Utilization Plan, otherwise known as SWMBI. Um, we have been working with our legal counsel, uh, to evaluate the, um, federal guidance and executive orders, uh, that control the expenditure of federal funds in consideration of some of the components of our SWMBI plan. Um, and we have one change to make on the first page under section one C. Um, this would be, uh, following some of the updates we provided, provided to the board, uh, in the spring and the summer, anticipating needing to make these changes. Uh, we've followed, in terms of our practice, um, the, the federal mandates, um, but this would mirror, uh, the SWMBI plan to include that language. And so essentially, it would be stating that, uh, the SWMBI procedures would apply to all funds except for those specifically indicated herein, and then goes on to state, uh, that procurement funded in whole or in part by federal funds. The SWMBI utilization plan, as well as Article twenty-one of the C C S D Consolidated Procurement Code, uh, would not be applicable to that procurement, and that would keep us compliant, uh, with the receiving federal funds from Title One, um, I D A and everything in between. Um, I did also include, and I didn't want to, uh, confuse this item with the second attachment on the agenda, which is House Bill thirty-nine twenty-seven, uh, which is, uh, as we understand, potentially going to be taken up, uh, when the General Assembly reconvenes. Um, if that is ultimately passed in the form, uh, that, uh, we understand it, and, you know, some of the releases that you've seen, possibly in the media over the last couple of weeks, it may completely repeal, uh, our ability to have a SWMBI plan, uh, for local and state funds as well. Uh, but at this point in time, this is simply, uh, clarifying that the SWMBI plan does not apply, uh, to federally funded procurements in whole or in part.
Okay. Um, so the motion is to advance to the December eighth, twenty twenty-five board meeting for consideration to approve the revised plan. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I'll open it up for discussion. Dr. Temple?
I have a lot of angst about this, um, particular, um, policy. Um, I do like in the background statement that there seems to be intent here on, uh, maintaining annual training, um, that maintains a ten percent goal for, um, SWMBI utilization, uh, annual and semi-annual reports. However, I recognize that executive orders are not laws. And so it really bothers me to see this policy change. Also, listing H thirty-nine twenty-seven, which passed the House, but it is now currently in the Senate Judiciary, doesn't seem like this is a rationale to support, um, this particular policy. Um, I did ask a question about what kind of money are we talking about in terms of what would this, um, change to this implementation plan amount to?
So that, a- and just to answer your, your first, uh, piece of the discussion there, uh, the, the House Bill reference in no way influences the changes that are redlined in the plan. We just wanted to provide that information as context, as it's been relevant to, uh, information that's been shared in the media recently. Um, so the changes here are specifically related to federal procurement only, but we understand that there may be further changes forthcoming, depending on what the General Assembly does. Um, the total amount of federal, uh, SWMBI procurement in FY twenty-five, uh, was one point four million dollars. One point four million.
Ms. Roberson?
Yes, um, thank you. I wholeheartedly agree with Dr. Temple. It's, it's, uh, Ms. Prentice, is the legal, the, um, team here that you work with, because I, it was, it's my understanding that, um, in this past August, that, um, a federal court struck down this executive order, and it made it, um, i- invalidated it. Um, so I'm not sure, you know, are we being presumptuous? Uh, but I would like to hear from the, the, the legal team.
So we've, we've received a brief from counsel, a detailed brief from counsel, looking at all the considerations. And really, the recourse here is that if, you know, the belief is that if we were to continue to apply Article twenty-one in the SWMBI plan to federally funded procurements, that it would jeopardize our federal funding. Um, that the federal government could, uh, withhold or withdraw federal funding from C C S D, uh, for violating those considerations. And so, um, I think that's the, the impetus for making these changes. I actually believe the city of Charleston is, um, bringing forward similar changes this week, uh, for similar reasons, uh, tied to federal grants. And so, um, you know, we're, we want to make sure that we don't threaten in any way the district's federal funding uh, as a result of implementing policies that, you know, are, are adverse or in misalignment with executive orders. Um, and, and the federal brief that, or the legal brief that we can, uh, received considered all of those merits. Um, so realistically, our, the advice from counsel that we've received was immediately, um, to give consideration to, you know, not implement those practices as to not, um, call to question any of our federal funding, and then to bring to our board, uh, as part of the annual update, uh, the, this additional language to make sure we were compliant.
So did they talk about the, um, the court ruling in, um, this past August in their briefing to you all?
Yes, ma'am. I, we will confirm, uh, but my understanding was that that was taken into consideration as well.
And so this is being, just being precautious. It's not because they, this executive order was invalidated. They are still recommending to move forward with it.
Yes, ma'am.
And so what does that mean? Um, so that all of the SWMBI contracts now, they are grandfathered in, and they get to run its course, and, and then it will be no new, um, women or minority contracts?
So it, there, it would not be a prohibition on the awarding of any minority contracts using federal funds. It would just be any vendor preference, uh, for minorities, small women, minority business enterprises, and the specific reporting. Uh, so we would remove the federal funds from our, um, semi-annual, uh, SWMBI reporting to the Board of Trustees under that plan.
Okay, so it's just, it's just a preference. So a woman could still apply, um, as a woman, but she just would not get any preference?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
And the same thing, uh, for a minority, they could apply, they just won't get any preference?
Correct. And, and I'll say.
If there was a federal grant associated with it, then they wouldn't get that either. Like if, if there was a federal.
Let's do it, if you don't.
So there are, there are components in our code that allow vendor preference to SWMBI vendors that are certified. And so we would be able to continue to apply vendor preference to those entities with state and local funds, just not federal funds, whether it's grants or discre- uh, discretionary grants or formula, uh, any federal funds would, would be part of this. Now, I'll say, of that one point four million dollars, when I go through that list and look at it. Now, I'll say of that one point four million dollars, when I go through that list and look at it, I don't really think that vendor preference comes into play there. It's a lot of, you know, academic support services and things like that, and Title One plans predominantly that are being utilized. And so when you think about the notion of how vendor preference is utilized, not a lot of these services are competed. So this is really just the reporting, the most significant impact here is the reporting pursuant to the SWMBI plan.
So Mr. Prentice, I'm I'm sorry.
No, ma'am, Ms. Roberson, it's still you.
Okay, thank you. So so these women and minorities, so it would be in their best interest just to not use their designation as being a part of SWMBI.
So it, the designation wouldn't have any bearing either way. You know, the the certification that they go through, depending on what certification they have, we would still have the information in our system based on their vendor account establishment. We just wouldn't be able to report on it for federal purposes. So I would actually encourage vendors when they register to still go through the certification process and to report that registration, because you never know if the, you know, the bid they may be submitting for would be funded with state or local funds. We would still apply, as it stands now, all of the SWMBI procedures. So the the vendor account doesn't take into consideration which funding source. It's just the reporting and the vendor preference pieces. So I would definitely still encourage vendors to register. Now, of course, if the state law changes and they remove the components that drive Article twenty-one of the procurement code, you know, and other things that govern the certification process, there may not be a certification process because the state does administer many of those things in terms of registration. So I'm not sure how that would be impacted. And certainly, the vendor preference piece would be impacted more substantially if there was a change to state law that impacted SWMBI application to state and local funds. But the the impact is least severe at the federal side.
And Ms. Watley, my final question is, Mr. Prentice, are you going to, or have you thought about, will you put this information on the finance website? How would people know this?
So we will put the SWMBI plan out on the website. That that'll be a reference document on the shortlist of documents available to potential offers, as well as on our procurement portal. And so that the only consideration where it would come up was if there was a situation that triggered a vendor preference under the code for federally funded procurements. But again, I can't think of a circumstance where we've had to enact vendor preference regulation for federally funded procurement that would impact this. So I I think you'd see a lot more of that on things that are funded by state and local dollars. When you look at the volume of dollars expended across all of the SWMBI eligible vendors. So it's really just more of a reporting consideration as it stands right now.
Yeah, because this is not a lot of money right here, the one point four million. Thank you, Ms. Watley.
You're you're welcome, Ms. Roberson. Mr. Holland, I I'm going to come back to you if you don't mind. I'm going to go over to Ms. Stewart.
Yeah, of course, I had a question.
I'll come right back to you, Ms. Stewart.
No, I just, it was more within that question. And if you wait until it's your two minutes, you kind of lose it's just, it was just a really quick, but no, I'm I'm super disappointed that we're having to look at this. But I don't have any questions, no.
Mr. Holland, Ted?
Or Mr. Daniels? If the state goes through what they're trying to do, that does more damage to minority, women minority and vendors than anything else, correct?
The, yes, sir, the the changes at the state level would be much more significant. A, because of the volume of state and local funds that are expended in, you know, consideration of our overall budget for CCSD, but also because of the, you know, the the wide sweeping impact of appropriations that would be contemplated under entities that have a code that is materially similar to the state procurement code. So what I say there is, school districts in South Carolina are required to have a procurement code that is materially similar to the state's procurement code, which is codified into the code of laws. And so if they removed sections of the state procurement code that talked about SWMBI, then we would be required to remove those from our procurement code as a school district. Some public entities such as cities and counties, you know, especially in the areas where counties have home rule and can adopt their own procurement codes that are different from the state procurement code, might not be as impacted unless the regulations or the laws established by the state prohibit entities that receive state funds from adopting their own codes that have those types of provisions in them.
Well, that sounds about to ask, and we can't adopt our own, couldn't we?
No, sir, school districts under state law are prohibited from adopting their own procurement code. It has to be materially similar to the state code. And the State Office of Procurement and Materials Management Office has to review and approve that it's materially similar. So things in our code that might diverge from the state code would be references to a superintendent as opposed to a state agency head. So we just have to, you know, re-script our code to match the the spirit and need of the organization in terms of how we operate. But it still directly references the statutory sections in the the code itself in terms of each article.
So, for example, this goes through at the state level, and this is my last question. For the next three years, we could be hampered, but then hopefully and after that, it can be changed again on the state level, correct?
So the, the state could change the code at any point in time through the introduction of a bill. I mean, I'm just, I'm putting a number out there. Let's say they introduced a bill to repeal section, you know, eleven fifteen four twenty of the South Carolina Code of Laws, which was specific to a section of the state procurement code. Then, you know, at that point in time, we would need to amend our code that referenced that particular section to remove that reference. This just so happens to be kind of a package particular to all of these SWMBI considerations. But they could, they could make revisions at any point in time that would trigger us to have to make revisions. And the way that the code works with the school district is staff provides the revisions to the code to the board as information only, and then the state procurement office is the final approver.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right, Ms. Bailey?
So basically, what I'm hearing is this is a process that we're doing so that we are safe and not sorry during the path that the state is going down right now. So I just want to make sure that I'm correct in that thinking.
So this is really specific to federal. And, you know, irrespective of what might happen at the state level, I just wanted the board to be aware that you might see this again before the year is up. Because if the state makes changes midstream, we'll have to bring this back at the point those changes are made to comply. And so the the policy or the plan may come back at a point sooner as a result of those changes. I just kind of wanted there to be awareness since it was being discussed. But in no way is what's being discussed at the state level impacting the red lines that are in this document right now. This is strictly federal.
Okay, so we're just getting ahead of the curve.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Ms. Lieber? Ms. McKinney? Mr. Grabowski? Thank you, Mr. Prentice. Let's see, we have the motion to advance, which has already been made and seconded. I'll bring it up for a vote.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Ms. Stewart?
Nay.
So is it a five-four?
And all that does is take it to the board for tonight, right? Yeah.
All right, we will, that was a pregnant pause. We'll move it to IMC. Let's see, Ms. Trudy, do we have any potential consent or?
Yeah.
The AI and
That's been revised. Because it's set.
Oh, you're looking at a printed out one? Yeah. And then we
May I ask a question since I have to pay attention to this consent agenda in just a few minutes? We have five A, five B, and six A, but I think Dr. Temple changed her vote on five C so that it's nine oh, right? So that number, five C is included in consent. Okay, thank you.
Okay. And we will move on to item seven, public comments. And we only have one important public comment this evening, and that is Ms. Shar Fitzwater. You will get your full two minutes.
Good evening, I'm Dr. Shar Fitzwater. My topics for the COW are related to the Audit and Finance Committee. I want to commend the CFO and Financial Services Division leadership for adopting and enacting its three-year strategic plan. Not only are they pursuing effective, efficient, and innovative operations throughout the division, but they're also enhancing their customer service relationships and developing division staff. Clearly, the division is continuing to improve its contributions to the district. Kudos. I want to advocate for public comments to be available at Audit and Finance Committee meetings. Just like was required for the board meetings and proposed for the COW. As recently as November of twenty twenty-four, public comment was on the agendas of the Audit and Finance Committee. It has not appeared on the agenda in the last year. In spite of no provision for outside comments, members of the Board of Trustees who are not on that committee were allowed to ask questions at the April second, twenty twenty-five meeting. That conversation made it apparent there's value in having people be able to ask questions when the experts are present. Additionally, it's valuable for Audit and Finance Committee members to be aware of the questions that are raised by the public and other board members. Those questions or comments inform the committee members in their deliberations. At the Audit and Finance Committee meeting last week, I would have asked about the internal audit study that reviewed enrollment projections for facilities planning and use. There were no findings or opportunities identified in that portion of the internal audit. I'd like to know what process the auditors use, what comparable information was considered from other districts or organizations, and what accuracy review they conducted. I would have liked to hear their, heard their responses and any committee members' insights on this. Please consider this request for instituting public comments at the committee meetings. I acknowledge that Mr. Prentice is very knowledgeable and has a depth of knowledge, but I think there's a value still to having the opportunity to interact. Thank you.
Mrs. Watley, if if we may, Mr. Prentice can respond to those.
Mr. Prentice, would you like to respond?
So we can follow up specific to the internal audit question. I'll have to look at that information a little bit more closely to be able to provide a more detailed response. But I know that, you know, it's particular to projections in terms of the calculations that are that are completed. We typically run variances at the ten-day process each year. And we were pleased to see, as our projections have continued to be refined and and fine tuned, that the variances we saw this year were were minimal. We didn't have to riff any employees or eliminate any positions. And we also didn't use any of our contingency that we set aside. And we were actually able to use some of the contingency funds that were typically set aside for variances to expand special education and multilingual services throughout the district. So I'll look at the specifics. I think it's merit of that question. But I I do watch the the variances very closely. And we've seen a significant tightening up in the projection to actuals each year that drive allocations based on our allocation formulas that are adopted. And of course, that's the the goal is we don't want to have any variances that drive creation of additional sections that, you know, split up students in classes. And we also don't want to have collapsing of sections that recombine students in classes because we want to keep that experience for students as consistent as possible from day one. And we also want to be able to, you know, work within the the confines of the budget, equally important. And so that that was a great process to share, but we'll provide additional context as to their question.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Higgins. Thank you, Ms. Prentice. We we did not receive any online public comments for the committee of the whole meeting. And then the, and final closing items, we have upcoming meetings. This evening, we will have our regular board meeting. And then January the seventh, we'll have the Audit and Finance Committee meeting. January the twelfth, we'll have the next committee of the whole. January twenty-sixth, we'll have the next board meeting. And as I go to adjourn, once we adjourn, we'll take like a twenty-minute break before we before we begin the fifteen minutes before we begin the regular board meeting. I just wanted to give everybody enough time to go to the, you know,
A moment of privilege. Mrs. Watley, and I and I regret, we may not have gotten you a copy of the online comments, but we actually did get some for the committee of the whole. And I'm sorry if you didn't get them.
Did not.
We'll, we'll make sure we correct that moving forward. They all have to do with with neighborhood schools and making sure that we celebrate those and ensure that they are represented, especially at the season of school choice, which the window opens in January. And I want to state for the record that there are a variety of stakeholders represented on that, including educators who've spoken out on matters of public concern, including their neighborhood school and wanting to support specifically Stono Park. So I want those educators and parents in West Ashley to know that we will review those comments, and I'll be responding to the entire faculty tomorrow with some exciting news about the launch of a neighborhood school campaign that Mrs. Mills is leading effective January, because we believe in neighborhood schools and the importance of having viable options for all families where they live. Thank you.
Do you have the information really available of how many online public comments were made? Ms. Dangerfield, did you?
There were eight.
Eight. Thank you very much. So do I have a motion to adjourn? Second. Second? All right.
Thank you, Ms. Watley. Thank you, Ms. Watley.
You're taking around.
Oh, you know it's. It's gonna be so much of a win here. If I could go on a comment.
So.
Him, he got a. It would go through the way.
And I know this is a joyous occasion, um, starting with the wonderful music we had earlier. But before we begin even calling to order tonight's meeting, um, the Board of Trustees would like to take a moment to honor a valuable life and legacy of Ms. Marguerite Middleton. She's beloved and a longtime principal in Charleston County School District who passed away over Thanksgiving break. Ms. Middleton dedicated her career to serving the children of Charleston County. Over the years, she positively impacted countless students, families and colleagues through her work in schools and departments across the district, including Hawk Gap Middle School, Baptist Hill High, Burke High, the former High School of Charleston, Mitchell Elementary, Springfield Elementary, Mini Hughes Early Childhood, the Office of Accountability and Accountability and Academic Outcomes and Human Resources. So on behalf of our Board of Trustees, we want to, I want to extend the deepest condolences to Ms. Middleton's family, friends and the school communities that she served so faithfully. We're grateful for her devotion, her leadership and her unwavering commitment to Charleston County's children. So if you'll join me just a moment for a moment of silence. Thank you. Now, we'll call to order the, um, December 8th meeting, um, of the board. Um, we will stand now for someone to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Brooke, Brooke, can you tell us who you are?
Brooklyn Canower.
And where are you a student, Brooke?
Um, at North Charleston Creative Arts.
And we appreciate you leading us in our pledge.
You're welcome. A pledge in allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Brooke. And Brooke, before you go, Ms. Anita, I'm right here. I'm right here. Can you tell everybody how much your, your already reading improved from fall to winter? Forty-two points. Let's give her a round of applause. Woo, Brocky! We're so proud of you. Thank you, Ms. McCanney.
Thank you.
Um, is there a motion to adopt the agenda and the consent agenda?
I still move.
Moved by Ms. Watley. Is there a second? Second by Dr. Temple. Excuse me, Ms. Bailey. Do you have that, Ms. Trudy? Okay, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Is there a motion to approve, um, the November 10th minutes for Committee of the Whole?
I saw move.
Move by, uh, Ms. Lieber. Is there a second?
A second by Ms. Bailey.
Second by Ms. Bailey. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Is there a motion to approve the November, November 10th, twenty, um, twenty-five board meeting minutes?
That's a move.
Moved by Ms. Watley. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Bailey. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion passes. And now we'll move on to the wonderful special recognitions. I hear there's a lot of excitement in the hall. Yes, ma'am. I think so. Mr. Pruitt?
Good evening, everybody. Once again, we, uh, have uh, some special recognitions for state champions. Uh, for the second year in a row and for the 10th time in program history, Wando High School is a state champion in girls tennis. The Warriors edged Spartanburg four to three in the South Carolina High School League 5A Division One Team Finals on Saturday, November 8th. Wando's number one doubles team of senior co-captains Mia Kadewi and Cali Kazaza rose to the occasion in the final match of the day, breaking a three-three tie with a victory in straight sets. This is the first time the Warriors, who finished the year with a 22 and four record, have won back-to-back championships since the 2008 and 2009 stretch. Congratulations to head coach Bob Lang and the Wando High School Girls Tennis Program.
And we certainly want to thank your parents who are proud and here and are committed. So thank you all for being here. For your students. Thank you. Or right, maybe left. Stage left.
And now we'd like to go ahead and bring in the Academic Magnet High School Girls Tennis Team.
Okay, friends, how are you?
The Raptors completed a dominant run in the South Carolina League, South Carolina High School League 2A State Playoffs with a six-nothing victory over top seeded Landrum in the state finals. The victory gives the Raptors back-to-back High School League 2A State Championships. Academic Magnet opened the playoffs with a bye, then swept four straight matches, six-oh, including the win over Landrum in the finals for the second year in a row. The Raptors finished the season with an eighteen and six mark. We congratulate head coach Mark Borst and the Raptors Girls Tennis Program.
Proud of you, ladies. You're a hard team to coach, I hear from your principals. It's difficult to work alongside, isn't it? Our trustees are going to come and congratulate you and take a quick picture we sign in a little bit. Congratulations, guys. Happy holidays.
And that concludes special recognitions for this evening.
We will move on, um, to item three with public comments. And as our protocol is, uh, just as a reminder, no speaker may use public comment session for personal or derogatory comment of any individual to discuss personnel matters or to discuss matters otherwise private or confidential. Speakers are, are to discuss issues, not individuals. Issues addressed should reflect business that is before the board and/or is relevant to our district. So with that being said, we will, um, if you will please, when you take the podium, state your name so that we will, uh, have accuracy. Uh, the first three will, uh, with two minutes will be Jennifer Hanky, Holland Hanky and Hayden Williams.
Hi, my name, oh, sorry. My name is Jennifer Hanky and I'm a mom of two CSD students. And I'm here to support the art community of Lucy Beckham High School, along with CCSD as a whole. As AI makes its way into our lives as a new and immersive technology, all of us are forced to adjust and figure out what that means for us as a society. Notably, we are discovering that the arts are just as at risk, if not more so, than many other careers and areas and skill. A great example of this controversy is the recent strike by the Screen Actors Guild in order to protect their industry livelihoods and creative efforts from elimination by thoughtless, passionateless technology. As we navigate this change and determine what we want for our world, true God-given gifts and creative talent should be protected in order to sustain our society as a worthwhile and meaningful place. This isn't a refusal of allowing AI to exist, rather creating an environment to differentiate between God-given talents and AI-created material. And as a new school board wading into this world, I don't envy your position trying to stay on top of the constant changing landscape. Recently, the district had a contest, an art contest, and allowed AI art to compete against classic, classically gifted artists. I brought with me several students who would like to speak to you about this and their concerns. There were many more students that were planning on being here last meeting, but the meeting was changed and they weren't able to come. Thank you so much in advance for your time and attention to their thoughts. I applaud them for the courage to get in front of the school board to speak and advocate for themselves and what matters to them. I encourage the board to have some students on these committees that you create as they will be much more advanced in the knowledge of this technology than us old people ever will. Thank you for having me and thanks for doing this job. I know it can be hard and thankless. So thank you very much.
Is Holland Hanky here or Hayden Williams?
Um, hello, my name is Holland Hanky. Oh, sorry. Thank you. Um, and I would like to speak on the issue of AI art. So as my mother said, uh, there was an art contest recently, Oktoberfest, and I was gonna join because I'm an artist myself and I was really excited. But, um, I saw a thing that said the AI art was allowed and that's extremely unfair to allow an art competition, especially without the use of separate categories to differentiate between them. AI is not able to generate an original image. To train a model, programmers input hundreds of thousands of mainly copyrighted work and usually without any of the artist's permissions. There's actually a lawsuit between, uh, Disney and Universal and an AI company called Merjourney about this right now. Um, and it's like AI art is basically cheating. You don't have to think about the composition of a piece. You don't have to think about color theory. You don't have to think about any of these things that artists go to school, they learn about. And like people put their life's work into this and it's insulting to have a machine that can just replicate somebody else's art piece. Like if you put in, put a picture of a cloud and it will generate you a visually nice picture of a cloud, but there was no thought put into it. A big part of the art is the process and there is no process. Something that makes art really special is that it is the, like, it's the expression of human emotion. Ever since, uh, caveman times, people have been using art to express their emotions in cave paintings and such. And using it just, it strips the humanity away from art. You, I will always be able to tell an AI piece from a, a human-made piece because it lacks the soul of like somebody who sat there for hours. They took the time to learn and they really thought about what they wanted this piece to say. And I'm running out of time, but it, their AI art should not be allowed to compete against people who have spent so long, they spend so long working to have some person who does not know anything about art to generate a random prompt that is stolen from other people's ideas and win the contest. So make a separate category or, yeah. Thank, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Hayden Williams and I'd like to talk to you about the Oktoberfest Art Contest. Hello and good evening, CCSD School Board. Thank you for allowing me to address AI being allowed in Oktoberfest District Art Contest. As education advocates, I implore you to consider adding precautions to contests like this, especially in regards to AI. This situation deeply affects me as a student and artist and a writer. I believe AI is a tool to allow you to improve, but can you improve without practice? Can you develop and culminate your skills without work? Putting a prompt into a generator cannot be compared to spending hours detailing each stroke of a brush. That's why instead of eradicating AI, I ask you to not compare a budding artist's work with artificial intelligence. It is allowed to, this absurd to compare a child's poster to something that It is allowed to, this is absurd, to compare a child's poster to something that can copy the Mona Lisa. So, I beg of you, don't compare. Instead, create a separate category for AI, apart from human-generated work. Judge it against itself. By educating and listening to young minds, I believe both sides can come to an agreement on this controversial matter. Thank you very much for having me.
Our next read public comments are Shar Fitzwater, Sydney Van Bullock, and Andy Massey.
Well, again, I'm Dr. Shar Fitzwater. Careful and orderly processes are an important element of transparency required by this board's policies. I want to point out a specific issue regarding this transparency. The policy on board policy process indicates proposals regarding policies may originate from a wide range of sources, including the superintendent and members of the district staff, people from the board, and even from the public. It then stipulates, "The board shall use a careful and orderly process in examining such proposals prior to action on them by the board." The problematic path of Policy FF earlier this year gives vivid evidence of the importance of being able to track and understand language being presented, rationale, and alternative perspectives. Once language is presented to the board, it should be handled with a careful and orderly process. Changing the language following a general conversation or one person's statement on their position is not an orderly process. Actions by the chair and vice chair to include new language within agenda need to ensure that only language moved forward by the board is considered, and any changes to the language are not an orderly process. In any step in the first and second readings, as the board has a discussion of language presented, the language should change only when a majority of the board votes for it to change. Folks, it's never just the first reading. Deliberate carefully on policy language. People who propose the language and the public deserve to understand the deliberations, rationale, and considerations of the board members. The board should not, could ask to review alternative language, but the original proposal should remain intact unless a vote is taken otherwise. Your conversations on the AI policy today reflect the challenges of complex language and show another time that the language should not slide through. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sydney Van Bullock. Bear with me, I'm a little sick and I don't usually read my comments. But, good evening. First and foremost, thank you for restoring public comment to the committee of the whole. While it might have made more sense for me to express my gratitude during the call itself, I felt that it was best to limit my time at the podium to one single appearance. Reinstating public comment demonstrates a genuine commitment to hearing from your constituents, and I appreciate that. Unfortunately, I must also express some disappointment and concern. Recently, it appeared that the board majority might finally be willing to collaborate more effectively with the minority. I was genuinely impressed with how well everyone worked together to pass the bylaws for the new foundation. I thought to myself, finally, this board is ready to work together in the best interests of students. But sadly, those hopes diminished last month during the election of the leadership roles for the new year. Each time this board holds an election, there seems to be a renewed discussion around the confusion and fairness regarding the process. I respectfully ask that the newly-elected policy and personnel liaison consider bringing forward a clearer and more equitable policy for the board to vote on. The conduct displayed by the board majority last month was at minimal disappointing. One board member suggested that the behavior was justified because they have a responsibility to their constituents.
I'm sorry, but you can't reference people even without a name. Shall I read the policy again? About public comments?
No, ma'am. I apologize. I thought as long as I didn't include her name.
No personal or derogatory comment about any individual.
Okay, well, I thought that it was pretty generic, but I apologize.
That's okay. We're all learning every minute.
All right, let me find my place back. Anyways, I would like to offer a counterpoint that only three of the current board members were elected by a majority of their constituents. And of those three, only one of them holds a leadership position. Five individuals hold all seven leadership roles, and five of those individuals only amassed 21.5% of Charleston's votes when elected. But it leaves a lot of constituents that are not represented. More than half of the county is represented by someone other than the person that they voted for. The board has an obligation to prioritize good governance. One that includes shared leadership. Shared leadership would not have two board members holding multiple leadership roles while four members hold none. I'm not naive, I understand that politics inevitably plays a role in everything. However, your elections were intentionally designed to be nonpartisan. So, I ask you today, are you more concerned with partisan strategy or doing right by the students and families that you serve?
I'm sorry, your time's up. Thank you. Andy Massey, Luanne Rosenwick, and Evette Campbell.
Good evening. My name is Andy Massey, and I'm a constituent in District 3. I appreciate the opportunity to share my thoughts today regarding the principles of nonpartisan governance, the responsibilities of elected public officials within a constitutional federal republic, and the importance of shared leadership. The United States is fundamentally a constitutional federal republic which represents a specific form of representative democracy. At its core, our system is defined by a constitution that divides power between the federal government and the individual states. As citizens, we exercise our role in this structure by electing representatives who are entrusted to make decisions on our behalf. Within this framework, this board is tasked with making crucial decisions that affect the Charleston County School District and its children. Each member here was elected through a nonpartisan process. Notably, only three members secured a majority in their respective voting districts, while the remaining six members were elected by plurality. Although the school board election process is officially nonpartisan, a practice followed by approximately 85% of school boards nationwide, it is concerning that in practice, the board often appears to function along partisan lines. This tendency was particularly evident during the recent election of officers in leadership positions. Currently, there is a lack of shared leadership within the board. Five members hold all seven leadership positions, leaving four members without leadership roles. Importantly, two of those excluded from leadership were elected by a majority of voters in their districts. This imbalance undermines the principle of shared leadership that should guide a nonpartisan board. There has been discussion, both within our community and nationally, about whether there is a mandate to govern in a particular manner. In the case of this school board, the election results do not indicate a clear mandate. Therefore, the true mandate for this board is to operate in a nonpartisan way, to govern impartially without favoring any political or ideological group. Only by embracing this can we, the board, fulfill the ideal expressed in the pledge.
Thank you, your time is up.
I'm Luanne Rosenwick. What qualities define a person or organization as being good? The prophet Isaiah summed it up in two principles. Observe what is right and do what is just. I'd like to apply those two principles to this governing body. The Board of Directors has nine members and seven leadership positions available. These positions are critical to the effective and efficient functioning of the school district and impact the quality of education that our children receive. An objective observer might think, well, okay, let's spread those seven leadership positions across the nine members with positions given to the members most qualified to fill them. Leadership positions would also be periodically rotated so that all members have a chance to serve. That would be an example of shared leadership. However, last month, this board delegated all seven positions to only five board members. That means two members have two key leadership roles each, while four board members have none. These four overlooked board members represent four out of nine districts, which is 44% of the district. So, 44% of the school district constituents are without representation in leadership positions on this board. How can this be observed as right? And how can it be seen as just? I know how Isaiah would answer. Yvette Campbell?
Good evening, everyone. I'm sorry, I had to find my script. You know how it is when you have little ones.
May we start the time over, please?
Good evening, my name is Yvette Campbell, and I'm here to continue to reiterate the issue of transparency and good governance across district lines. We all, after a bit of research and reflection on the seven leadership roles, things look, pardon, things look very one-sided when many of the constituents aren't being represented. That's why we're here. Are all of the needs actually being considered? Things like children in Title I, or even the gifted and talented programs, are in those voting areas. So, we want all the people to be represented. The appointment voting process, pardon me, the appointment voting process is skewed. It is. And it's based on the order of the nominations. So, I don't see shared leadership there. So, as stated previously, true governance is in question. Thank you for your time.
Ms. Huckins, are there any comments you'd like to follow up on?
Thank you, Chairwoman McKinnney. Yes, ma'am, just I want to thank all speakers, obviously, but Holland, Hayden, and their parent Jennifer for coming. We will look more into the AI-generated Oktoberfest. We would share some of the similar concerns expressed, and we'll follow up on that matter and work with them and follow up with them as well. Thank you.
Certainly. On to, I did not get a copy of online comments. Do we have?
There are no additional comments, other than the ones from Stone Oak Park in the committee of the whole, Mrs. McKinnney.
Thank you. We will move on to item 4A, the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mrs. McKinnney, thank you trustees. Tonight's report will be brief. I know you and the public are tired, but I'm really excited tonight to talk to you a little bit about an exciting program that we have here in Charleston County, readying our students with special needs for what's next. And last week, we did celebrate Exceptional Educator Recognition Month, and we have several certified special educators in the audience with us, and I'd like them to stand and be recognized. Mrs. Stahl, that's you, Mrs. Bell, that's you. Mrs. Van Bullock, you didn't teach special ed? Yes, you didn't. Okay. Well, we are going to applaud Mary Stahl and Sherry Bell nonetheless. And you may not be aware, but our own staff attorney, Lindsay Ann Thompson, is a special educator. So, Lindsay Ann, we thank you for your past service as an educator of special needs students. Being an educator is hard, but being a special educator is harder. I think I was a recovering, I am a recovering English teacher, and I know that many days I marveled at the work that our special educators did with a lot of heart for our kids that need it the most. And so, trustees, I know you joined me in thanking special educators. And tonight, we're going to highlight some of the creative work that they're doing to make sure kids who leave our system are ready with opportunity for what they face next. And I want to thank Mary Stahl for being featured in this, and our great Todd and Mike. Todd's at the end, who always worked to put together exceptional videos to show you. So, here's tonight's spotlight. Thank you, Maggie.
Project Search is a transition program focused on supporting our students in Charleston County School District from a school setting to an employability setting in the community. We're very excited to be here at the Medical University of South Carolina, where we have a new partnership where we can provide our students with new experiences in a hospital setting, where they're able to learn those transferable job skills that they can take with them into the workforce.
Day-to-day, it is a great help to our departments, just having those extra hands, of course. But I think it has also been very enriching for the areas that our intern, our serving in. A lot of the feedback that we're getting is our internship sites are finding it very helpful. They've learned a lot about the interns and a lot about how they operate and how they can better operate with our interns. And also, it helps our gloves because it does offer a lot more job opportunities for a population that we may not have had as many eyes on as before.
This has been a very reassuring experience. As a parent of a child with special needs, you always worry about what's going to come after high school. I feel like the opportunity to be involved in this program, it allows him to make that transition from school to work.
Well, I first get here, I go to the classroom and wait for everybody to come, and then we get our badges, and we go out on our locations for a few hours. Then we come back to the classroom and learn about some job training skills and learn how to like, get a job in the future.
Project Search is just giving me the skills to work at the grocery store.
They have truly embraced them. They have become a part of the MUFC family. A lot of them are already ready to offer them a job. Project Search and MUFC partnership is a great opportunity to just provide those job options to a lot of our students here in our own backyard.
We really see a great value in the opportunities that Project Search presents. In Charleston County School District, our goal is to increase the job readiness skills for students and to focus on college and career readiness. And so, this opportunity provides that partnership and opportunities for students to learn the skills that then they can take with them into the workforce. He's become a lot more self-confident. He's established some new relationships here with a lot of the staff at MUFC, the people that work within his department. So, I feel like he's gaining a lot of skills, but also establishing a lot of great relationships.
I appreciate the opportunity to do something like this because I get, it is good to learn, it is good education for kids, like, learning how to do stuff independently and go out into the workforce.
That was a good answer, bud.
Isn't that amazing? And so, again, I want to thank our exceptional educators for thinking outside of the box about how we ready children for whatever they want to do next. And I think some of you had asked about these opportunities at one of our prior meetings, and we were planning to feature Project Search at an upcoming session. And you'll see here that it provides these high-quality career development opportunities so that kids are able to build independence and prepare for whatever they want to do next, from school to the world of work. And we are so thankful for the partnership with MUFC and their willingness to help us think about that. You'll see here on the next slide how the day, the program is structured. There are three 10-week rotations, about four hours a day. Our team works carefully to help select students that are ready for these opportunities. And 90 minutes of the instruction really focuses on making sure that these students have the hands-on opportunities that they need to be successful in these settings. The next slide, you'll see more about the folks on the ground, really helping them. They are able to receive training through They are able to receive training through vocational rehabilitation, who are on-site there to support them. And they have on-site teachers that support them through their work-based experience. And we believe that that is one of, or two of the key levers that are helping them be so successful in this real-world training. Again, the opportunity allows them to prepare for high-demand careers, not necessarily in the medical field, but other places. And you'll see they had a variety of tasks in some of the videos that were featured there. And it helps them build confidence in their exchange and their one-on-one interaction with people, which as you know from the world of work, is so very important. We look forward to continuing to monitor this partnership and to report back to you on the employment opportunities that our students gain after they transition out of this experience. But again, I want to thank our exceptional educators in the room, Mary Stahl and Sherry Bell for their work with Mrs. Simmons and other key members of our team, Mrs. Allison, to think again differently about how a K-12 system supports its learners. And with that, Mrs. McKinney, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you. Are there any questions about search? Dr. Temple?
I just want to say I'm so proud of MUSC for the work that they do. Not only that, the work that they do, but they hired my husband, who was able to do a Saturday Scholars Program for a hundred kids, four times a year, and we did it for years and years. So I'm not surprised that MUSC is involved in this project. Couple of questions, I'm wondering, what year in school do the students have this experience? And how many students are in the program? How many are on the waiting list? What kinds of jobs are available for these students? And do we have any other partners? We have a lot of business in this community. And this seems like it would be a really good model because as a act of family members with disabilities, I know that the anxiety and the sadness that happens when they leave our school system and then try to find a job.
Exactly, and we do believe that this can serve as an exemplar. As we continue to build partnerships, and we do have some of those. And I'll turn it over to Mrs. Simmons and her team.
Sure, so, right, that was a laundry list of questions, Dr. Temple. But Mary Stahl, if you want to go to the microphone, I'll get started. But before MUSC partnered with us for the last couple of years, Embassy Suites was the partner, and so our scholars had work opportunities, work-based opportunities at Embassy Suites, and that was a wonderful experience. We've transitioned to MUSC, but Mary can speak about how we identify the scholars. They are scholars who are exceptional, but they've already aged out of our K-12 system. And so this gives them their first opportunity to engage in a work setting. Mary?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak about the program. The Project Search program is available for students with disabilities that have completed four years of a high school program. These are students that are not on a standard South Carolina diploma pathway. They are students that are participating in the South Carolina Employability Credential or Certificate of Attendance program. We currently have six students from across CCSD that are participating in this program for this school year. And then we will identify our new set of students in the spring. We'll do an application process, and students from across all CCSD high schools are invited to apply if they're interested in that opportunity. We do parent information sessions as well as student information sessions. And the goal of the program is certainly 100% employment upon completion of the program. Often, our interns are offered employment opportunities at the internship setting. So this year, it would be at MUSC. And then for the past six years, we've been at the Embassy Suites Hotel. And many of our, we have several students that are still employed there that started in 2018. You're welcome.
Any other questions about search? Ms. Roberson, or Mr. Holland's head?
No questions.
No ma'am, no questions.
Ms. Bailey?
My question is, the level of disability, how does that factor in into the work program?
We do what's called a Skills Assessment Day. It's part of the application process. So every student that submits an application is invited to participate in Skills Assessment Day. Skills Assessment Day is held at the business site. So in the past, we were at the hotel, now we'll be at the hospital. But that opportunity is set up with different rotations, where the prospective interns are able to participate in a variety of tasks, as well as an interview. We also talk with the parents to really make sure that our goals align. And so it's a pretty robust process, and it involves many different community partners. So we have members of different agencies that help to support us, as well as CCSD partners that participate, and then also the business site as well. So a lot of eyes that really, you know, and hearts that go into making that selection.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions about search?
CCSD continues to impress. And I don't know if the state is doing the same thing. I know our superintendent Anita Huggins has, on a national, a voice on a national level. So definitely implore you guys to continue to share the value here.
Well, thank you, Ms. Lieber, we appreciate that. I just get to work alongside great people like Mary. I've known her for a really long time, and she's always had a passion and a heart for special needs students. And it's when really great people get together and think differently about educating kids, we're able to accomplish great things.
You're welcome. And I do have to recognize that truly, this program is successful because of the partnership within the district as well. So transportation, nursing, every, I mean, everyone has hands on this to help make it success. So thank you to the whole school district.
And ideally, if there are other partners out there looking for opportunities to work with kids and to support them in ways that are different, we would love to partner with you. And we again are really thankful to Dr. Cole and the exceptional team at MUSC. They really keep showing up for our kids here in the district and those who have the most needs.
Thank you. All right. Thank you so much for that uplifting.
Yes ma'am, thank you.
We will move on to item 5A. Is there a motion to approve the revenues collected but not budgeted from fiscal year 2026? So moved by Ms. Bailey, seconded by Ms. Watley. Are there questions?
I do.
Yes?
So are the questions for Mr. Barori or Mr. Prentice?
Either?
Either?
Yes ma'am, either.
Yes ma'am.
Okay, so either one, either can answer. My question is, and it's about the budget. And why was this not budgeted into the FY26 budget? Then secondly, why is this being asked to be split in mid-year? And thirdly, what would happen if the split doesn't happen?
Yes ma'am, so historically, we have never budgeted those funds. They sit in a different account for facility rental revenues, and that was traditionally a much smaller annual collection. And so it really dipped out around COVID and was pretty inconsistent. And then over the last two years, we've seen that revenue stream grow. So we've been analyzing it. We've actually now moved the posting and collections of the revenues into the primary allocation of line items within the General Operating Fund. And we're going to plan to budget for it in FY27, now that we have some trend data. But again, it was a historical account that was never budgeted in all years past. And so as we looked at the continued utilization of our facilities, which is a good thing in terms of the revenues collected, we recognized that there's a variable cost to the maintenance and the staffing of the facilities as the rentals have increased over time. And so instead of taking funding from within the existing General Operating Fund budget, we thought it prudent to recognize some of those revenues this year. And then in the FY27 budget, we will make an adjustment to include additional expenditures based on the volume of the trend that we're seeing after three years of analysis, as well as to budget the revenues. To answer your other question, if it wasn't approved by the board this year, we would have to move funds from our central contingency. But we just prefer not to do that, since the costs were directly correlated as variable cost to the rentals that were occurring within our facilities.
Okay, so I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I believe it said that you have $704,000 in the rental fee budget now. And so you would take $180,000 of that to start up the split?
Yes ma'am, the analysis in the memo that was provided through Audit and Finance Committee indicated that $180,000 would cover all of the overhead costs for FY26. And then we'll evaluate that and put an actual number in as an expansion for the FY27 budget. But again, it would be supported by a revenue budget, you know, probably four times that amount.
Okay, and let me ask two more questions to you, Mr. Prentice, and then maybe Mr. Barori can answer the last question. What is that money normally used for, from the rental fee? And what line item, where can we find that money now in the budget? Where does this sit?
So it's always just been collected and rolled into the General Operating Fund fund balance. So it is part of the General Operating Fund. And now, in terms of the report, it would show up under local revenue sources. So it's other local revenue sources, not from property tax collections. And if you go into an actual detailed budget report, it's rental facility rental revenues.
Okay, so it's just, it's sitting in the GOF now?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, and why is the department splitting now?
I'll defer to Mr. Baroi on the department component of it.
So the rationale for the department split was the establishment of real estate as a standard department. So real estate was combined with planning and facility use. At the start of this fiscal year, that was changed. And so we split that budget between real estate and planning and facility use.
Okay, so you split the budget between, okay. Because I was wondering if they had their separate budget. So it was one budget, and you split it, but you find that you need more?
Correct, and in the past, we've been able to move money between the three programs. But with that split, we wanted to establish a firm amount for real estate, and that's what we've done. And the remaining balance, obviously, is being handled by a facility use and planning.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions pertaining to this item? Then we'll call for the vote. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then the motion passes unanimously. Moving to item 5B. Is there a motion to approve the Charleston County Head Start Competitive, Start Competitive Grant Application for the grant period June 1st, 2026 to May 31st, 2031?
So move.
Moved by Ms. Bailey, is there? And seconded by Dr. Temple. Are there questions? Good. It's nice that we've all studied it, and so much information has been given, and there's so much positive support. Then we'll call for the question. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then the motion passes unanimously. Onto item 5C. Is there a motion to accept the reallocation of Phase 5 sales tax budget?
So move.
Moved by Ms. Bailey, seconded by Ms. Watley. Are there questions about this? Yes ma'am?
I just wanted to clarify, is all of the $92,563, is that all being reallocated to the James B. Edwards Elementary School?
Dr. Temple, all 12 products that are listed there are being swept up. So all the projects listed on that reallocation are complete, and we've taken the excess revenues and pushed it toward this project.
To James B. Edwards?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes ma'am.
Any other questions? Then we'll call for the vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then the motion passes unanimously. Is there a motion to convene into executive session to consider items covered by attorney-client privilege?
Does someone?
Moved by Ms. Watley, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Bailey. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then the motion passes unanimously, and we will convene in executive session.
So we have a long day.
By you, sir.
Is there a motion to reconvene open session? Moved by Ms. Watley, is there a second? Second by Dr. Temple, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously then. On to item nine A. I move that two students be allowed to remain enrolled as out of county residents at North Charleston Elementary School for the remainder of the 2025-2026 school year. That the tuition be waived and the transportation provided by the Guardian. Is there a second?
A second, Ms. Bailey.
Second by Ms. Bailey. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Hollishead, are you with us?
Yes, ma'am, I've voted along.
Okay, thank you. All right, then on to item nine B. The board supports the placement. I move that the board supports the placement. Is there a second? Second by Dr. Temple. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then the motion passes unanimously. On to item nine C. The board supports the district decision to withdraw the student after December the 19th. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Watley. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then the motion passes unanimously. I think the next item will then be ten C. The others were on the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the new policy AI literacy and acceptable use of generative artificial intelligence?
Some of them.
Moved by Ms. Watley, is there? Second by Dr. Temple. I'll open the floor for discussion.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I do think that there was a lot of discussion on secondary language and this is one of those unique situations in which we have a Cal meeting and there's no time in between Cal and the first reading. So what I would like to recommend is policy liaison that if we take into consideration policy language being proposed by board members, that we don't include it or amend it to the original language as written. I do think it would be proper to present all that second language, but I think it is a valid point so that we don't run into a problem like we ran into FFF, that any proposed amendments to this policy, should the board decide to move it on, you know, past the first reading, that we should as a full board vote on those amendment additions to the policy. So what would happen? Second reading is you would have that policy as written, but should Dr. Temple say, I propose to have additional language to beef it up, or Ms. Roberson or myself had, that we would have that all listed by, you know, through the policy liaison and everything, and that we would vote as a full board so we don't run into this. Well, it's not the, you know, correct of what we're discussing anyway.
That was my only point.
Okay. Right. This, if passing the first reading gives us the ability to start making those changes.
But what I fear, what I don't want to see happen, yeah. This is the first reading, but normally we would have had a Cal meeting and before the first reading, we would have had a substantial amount of time. That's not the case here. In this case, we go from Cal straight into first reading. There was a lot of discussion of potential language changes. So I think it's better that when we come into the second reading, we have, don't change the policy, you know, keep it as it was read, passed in the first reading, but let the board consider any additional changes to the policy.
I understand what you're saying, yeah, I agree with that.
Yes, and we're happy to do that and discuss it at the January Cal and perhaps we'll have some admin rule language drafted by then because again, policies are intended to be broad in scope and the admin rules get down to the details and other things to reflect some of the answers to questions that were asked here tonight. So it'll give us a little bit of time to do some more work. So we'll come prepared in January to discuss.
That works, that works at the Cal.
Absolutely.
It comes at Cal. Don't go, if we talk about adding stuff, you know, let's fully discuss it at Cal because I think at Cal, we can vote in, am I not correct?
We can.
Board into the board.
We can consolidate at the Cal by voting as a full board, right?
Ms. Huggins, I would ask that while you do the administrative review, I agreed with those, as an artist myself, I agree with those presenters for the public comments that you can't really, a human and a computer don't really compare and should be separate.
We don't disagree here. I think that there's some confusion about the contest in and of itself. I think the contest was around messaging versus art per se. But anyway, we're going to look into the matter, but we don't disagree.
Contest aside, I think even if students are working on that stuff, you know, some students want to develop their computer skills and AI skills, but you know, just keeping that separate is good. You're right, right.
Correct, again, I just think there's some general misunderstanding, but we'll deal with that internally and then we'll work on the administrative rule.
But correct me if I'm wrong, that's a curriculum, more of a curriculum side, isn't it?
Relates to a lot of different competitions. I mean, because you could have science there projects that were generated with AI versus those that students did. So I think we're getting off track about the motion for the first reading, but all of these comments will help.
We'll take these.
For the Cal.
They sure will.
The changes we need, additions.
Well, I look forward to having a more robust conversation about it at the next Cal meeting. Yeah, I think we're all on the same page with this. Yeah.
I think competition.
Just make it real clear where the amendments are, like we did with foundation.
Red.
And the numbered line items.
We will. And again, I think a lot of what you've discussed tonight are it's more appropriate to admin rule. So we'll work on it and then certainly we're open to your feedback and to whatever revisions you recommend.
And so I would suggest that any suggestions or ideas that were mentioned tonight could be sent to Mr. Grabowski as our liaison so that he can then.
Dusty Rhodes.
To fund them that way. That would be great and if the sender so chooses.
Rhodes never wanted his kids to become wrestlers. So how did two of them end up as wrestling stars? While the other two. Life under the American dream's shadow. Growing up as Dusty Rhodes's child wasn't as glamorous as.
I'm not sure where it's coming from. I know, I'm looking at my phone. Wasn't you, Ms. Hollis? Yeah, it's Starling. No, it's not me. All right. Moving right along so all the pajamas can go to sleep. Is there any other discussion about the first reading? All right, then we will call for a vote. All those in favor of the first reading for the new policy, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Then the motion passes unanimously. So we are moving on to item eleven C. The board of trustees must appoint two trustees, a principal and a teacher to the foundation board of directors to serve as ex officio members alongside the superintendent and chief financial officer.
Ms. McGinnity, I think we're actually on B.
Oh, I'm so sorry, I had a consent question mark and I didn't answer my question. So thank you. So eleven B. Is there a motion to approve the SWMB revised plan?
I saw motion.
Moved by Ms. Lieber, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Bailey. I will open the floor for more discussion or I should say continued discussion from Cal if there are other questions or comments. Dr. Temple.
Yes, I'd like to speak to this based on historic and mission, from a historic and mission perspective. This weekend, school board members were asked how recent presidential executive orders affecting educational funding are impacting local districts. Here's my concern. If the emphasis is on states and school districts making our own decisions about education, how do federal executive orders that restrict funding help us, especially when they require dismantling policies, practices and programs that were created to address opportunity gaps? And how do they help us when they force changes to longstanding procurement policies designed to ensure fairness? For context, in 2005, CCSD approved a women and minority business enterprise utilization plan in direct response to the South Carolina General Assembly's concern that women and minorities were not fully participating in the state's free enterprise system. The CCSD board recognized this inequity and acted intentionally to expand economic opportunity and ensure fair practices for procurement of goods and services. Today, as a district, we are working hard and effectively to close opportunity gaps for our students. I believe the action taken by the school board in 2005 was an intentional commitment to reflect our mission. It signaled to all of our graduates that our commitment extends beyond the classroom and into a workforce with a fair competitive marketplace. I am concerned about the ongoing threats to educational funding and programs. For example, tonight we're having to consider changes to a business enterprise plan and the economic opportunities for women and minorities it was designed to protect. What's next? I urge this board to protect policies and educational programs that expand opportunity, strengthen economic mobility and reflect our values as a public school system. Thank you.
Are there questions? Ms. Watley?
Mr. Prentice and Ms. Huggins and perhaps Mr. Johnson. With the concerns that are being expressed and I, as a female business owner, I understand, also a female that was one of the first in law enforcement. I understand the feelings, I also have some concerns. Is there a way as a district that we can answer these concerns and still be in compliance with the law and ensuring that we'll have a process that gives everybody equal examination and opportunity?
So with respect to federal procurements, we know based on advice that we've received and honestly, example setting that's occurred throughout the country with other public institutions receiving public funding, that if we don't amend the plan and we don't follow the federal mandates, there's a tangible risk to federal funds.
I'm not disagreeing with what your precautionary measures, but certainly there's got to be a way that as a district, we can put these concerns at rest that we will make sure that everybody has, is looked at. Nobody's going to be dismissed or overlooked or discriminated against. But maybe, I don't agree with somebody getting to the front of the line when they're not qualified and capable of fulfilling the vendor or the contract or anything like that, but certainly there's got to be a way that we can express to the community that nobody's going to be discriminated against or left out.
I will say, I am not aware of a circumstance in the last year where we have actually exercised the vendor configuration of the code. It really is going to come down to the reporting of it. And again, you know, even if state law changes, we're not going to be able to report on it the same way. But, you know, our bidding process is designed to, you know, either on qualifications or on price or on merit, you know, award to the most cost-effective, responsive and responsible bidder in all cases.
Perhaps we can highlight how we do our selection process then.
Sure, and you know, the other thing that we've talked about, it doesn't prohibit, you know, vendor fairs, vendor education or even the expanded bidding process that we've administered by having a portal that markets our opportunities across multiple sectors and platforms to try to get a higher, you know, quantity of bids from various vendors that, you know, honestly, from an access standpoint, you know, when, before we made our transition to the online bidding platform, people had to physically show up at Bridgeview with, you know, X number of copies of a paper proposal that had to be prepared and now they can do all of it online. So I feel like the barriers, you know, regardless of any, you know, federal mandates or anything like that, we can work to reduce the barriers and make the process as easy as possible for every business to participate in the process and no matter what's happening, you know, or whatever the climate is, we're always going to do that.
I think that if we can just be very intentional about vocalizing that and displaying that, I think that will probably help. It's going to take a matter of time to build trust though.
Yeah, you know, I think there are sort of two ways to approach it. One is wording. I think you have to carefully express the intent. I think everyone recognizes or at least would not necessarily disagree with the intent of trying to be inclusive. But I think it has, you have to carefully address, it seems to me, how that effort is worded in the first place. And then secondly, you have to carefully carry out the process. But first and foremost, it's the wording and there has to be sort of a recognition that there are certain expressions, certain words that probably wouldn't be propitious to use in today's climate. And doesn't mean you need to necessarily, you know, back off the effort altogether. But it takes, I mean, you have to carefully express what it is that you liked or are trying to do and then carefully execute as well.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions or comments, Ms. Jewitt?
I guess my concern is, you know, and I understand it's good to be ahead of things and Charleston County seems to be in many ways and that's great. With the AI, I think it's great that we're kind of on the cutting edge and we're really trying to make sure that we're putting processes in place for it. I think for this, I think it's great that you have it written down. I don't think that it's something that we need to vote on or put into action until it's been completely voted through and it's been decided. I think that we're being a little too preemptive with this where making that change affects, affects the minorities in a way that is hurtful and doesn't need to necessarily happen yet. But having the conversations and having it in place and being ready for it is great. I just think that maybe we have to put this aside for the time being until it has actually passed through federal law.
So again, the advice that we've received from council is that we would be jeopardizing our federal funds and that's not something that I could, you know, ignore and not recommend to the board to make a change to text to ensure that we're not jeopardizing our federal funds. That's what this really comes down to. I could never, in good faith, you know, ignore something like that and, you know, not bring a recommendation forward from council that said, this is how you assure that you don't jeopardize your federal funds. It's such a substantial consideration for this district in terms of all of the federal sources that we receive. And at the end of the day, you know, what I'm advising is that it's unfortunate that we have to consider making this change. However, it really only impacts reporting when you think about tangible impact, given the consideration of how vendor preference has been applied to the use of federal funds. And so I think, you know, our recommendation follows that counsel is that the risk assessment is far too great to jeopardize, you know, millions of dollars of federal funds that support peoples in poverty, students with disabilities, Head Start programs, all of those things. And so that's why we're here with it.
So the federal government is telling us that if we don't do it before it passes, we will lose our funding.
There have been districts that have lost their funding as a result.
No, 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 is that what the federal government is telling us?
That's what the executive order reads.
That if we don't preemptively do it prior to it passing, that we will lose our federal funding.
So again, the Department of Education and other entities that administer federal funds have made operational directives to withhold federal funding from public entities that had these types of procedures in place. So irrespective of whether or not something is, you know, approved. So irrespective of whether or not something is, you know, approved by Congress, you know, they're hinging those decisions based on the executive order and the other mandates that have been passed down through OCR and other offices, depending on the agency.
Respectfully, I don't think that the federal government is going to go after Charleston County immediately after it passes.
Are there other comments?
Yes.
I think that the language...
Excuse me? Can you hear me?
Can I have a second turn? I mean, is anybody else here or something?
Yes, I'm trying to talk.
Okay, I just think that, I appreciate the concerns that Ms. Watley has expressed, and I think that the way this is worded is just too harsh, and it doesn't reflect the concerns that we have. Just, I don't think, it seems too final to me.
Hello?
I...
Can you hear me?
I was going to say, as chair, since this was not a consent item, I think we need to have a vote with show of hands, not voice. But you were going to make a comment.
You know, I appreciate what everything's being said, but in this environment, I'm not willing to risk, take one bit of risk for any federal funding. I think the state is going to be a different issue, and I think we're going to have to watch that very carefully, because I think that's where the majority of funding that we're talking about goes to. I have not heard anything from these, you know, from staff that shows this 1.4 as you guys are trying to talk about, has gone towards this purpose, and I just see this risk, and we cannot lose a penny. I mean, I just, I'm not willing to take that risk. Like I said, I'm more concerned with what the state's going to do, because that seems to be the one area where this preference does seem to be, you know, implied because of the size of the contracts and the type of contracts. But with federal money in this environment, I'm not willing to take the risk. The Department of Ed is not the executive order. The Department of Ed can make their own policies and everything without an executive order. An executive order may be something that can pursue and push the Department of Ed, but from what I've seen from this Department of Ed, I'm not going to take the risk. But that's opinion, my vote, anyway.
Also, though, they do usually give a time, you know, they give a warning. They tell you, "You have 10 days to put this in place," which if we have it pre-written, then we have the 10 days and we can have an emergency meeting and go for it. But, you know, this is women's rights. This is, it's continuing to take away things from my women and minorities that it... I think that this is early to be doing it. But I love that we have it written and ready to go, because I'm sure if need be, we can have an emergency meeting and set it in place. But I don't think it needs to happen today.
All right, I will call for the vote. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. And Ms. Roberson and Mr. Hollinshead, you may certainly voice vote, unless you've got your little hand icon. All right. The motion has five in favor. Opposed, please raise your hand.
Nay.
No.
Ms. Roberson and Mr. Hollinshead, do you all wish to vote either way?
I said nay.
I'm saying nay. Hello?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Ms. Roberson, how do you wish to vote?
No. Hello?
I think they're trying to...
We're trying to vote.
All right, all right. Yea or nay on the motion?
No.
No. And Mr. Hollinshead?
He also said no.
I need to hear it.
I said no.
Thank you, sir. I just heard him.
Okay.
So five yays, four nays, so the motion passes. Now, we are on to item 11C. I will not reread what I've read out of order. I will ask Ms. Huggins and/or Mr. Prentice about the principal and teacher nominee.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Mrs. McKinney. The staff would recommend McKenna Hawkinson, a teacher at North Charleston Creative Arts, to serve on the teacher representative. She served as the teacher of the year, facilitates our teacher roundtable meetings, and again, is a teacher in North Charleston. And then, as our principal...
And I'm sorry, would you spell her last name for me?
Yes, ma'am. She's recently married, but her maiden name was Hawkinson. H-A-K.
Okay.
A-N-S-O-N. And then, as our principal representative, the staff would recommend Susan King. She is the principal at Sullivan's Island and has run the biggest endowment foundation of our schools for 20 years as the principal over at Sullivan's Island. Again, significant background and experience in working with the foundation and understanding the mechanisms of action within.
Thank you.
So representative from North Charleston, and again, Mrs. King is out in Sullivan's Island.
Right. So I will ask our parliamentarian, since these are the staff recommendations, may we take them as one voter separate?
There may be, there may be other nominations from board members. I don't think the bylaws require that the recommendations only come from staff.
Okay. Are there any principal or teacher recommendations from the board? Hearing none, we'll consider the nominations closed. So with that being said, then we will vote on them separately. All those in favor of McKenna Hawkins as the teacher representative, please say aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Then the motion passes unanimously. All those in favor of Susan King as the principal representative, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Then the motion passes unanimously. All right, we will move on to trustee nominees as ex officio members of the foundation.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
If we nominate trustees for this position, how long is the term?
One year.
Is it one year? The terms for these four people that are the principal, the teacher, and the two ex officios?
So the initial term of phase one would be three years. So that would be the span of that initial appointment until it transitions to phase two. But the board could, you know, change that at any point in time if they so wished.
The reason why I ask is because this upcoming year is a new election, and if the people that we propose, if their term is up, will they still serve?
They would have to be appointed, new people would have to be appointed after the election if there wasn't continuity in the seat. So I don't believe there's any mechanism in the bylaws to account for, you know, reappointment if that person continues in their role. You know, it doesn't require a reappointment of officers like the board itself does whenever there's a reconstitution of the board. But if that person did not maintain their seat, then somebody else would have to be appointed to fill the vacancy. And that would still go that first three years, and then it would transition over.
Are there any other questions before we go forward? Thank you for that question, Ms. Bailey. Are there nominee, are there trustee nominees to serve in this position, ex officio?
I nominate myself.
I think everybody might... Ms. Lieber?
I nominate myself.
All right. Ms. Bailey?
I nominate Leo Watley.
Dr. Temple?
I nominate Darlene Roberson.
I nominate myself.
And I'll nominate myself. What the hell?
Well, I was going to nominate you.
All right. I want to repeat this to make sure I have it correct. The nominees are Lieber, Watley, Roberson, Jewitt, and Grabowski. And I would like to say at this point...
Pardon? No, don't, don't. It's, it's, have you ever tasted an apple coming, it's somebody's...
That the order of the nominees is not reflective of any preference. It is the nominees that, the nominees that have a majority vote.
Except they were all at the same time.
All right. So and I guess with this, we will need to do a raise of hands versus voice. All those in favor of Ms. Lieber? Ms... Well, I asked for in favor, so Mr. Hollinshead and Ms. Roberson, does that mean you are not in favor of that nominee?
No.
Do we get two votes or one vote?
You get two.
You two. Okay. She might had to tend to something. All right, so to be clear in answering Dr. Temple's question, yes, each person gets two votes. So that was Lieber and Jewitt. All right. All those in favor of Ms. Watley, please raise your hand. We're voting. Everybody gets to vote twice. One, two, three, four. Mr. Hollinshead?
Nay.
Okay. All right. All those in favor of Ms. Roberson, please raise your hand. All right. All those in favor of Ms. Jewitt, please raise your hand.
Aye.
Okay. All those in favor of Mr. Grabowski? So Mr. Grabowski and Ms. Watley will represent the trustees for the filing.
I had four votes.
You had two.
I had four.
Oh, excuse me, you had three.
I had...
Yours, Dr. Temple's, and Mr. Hollinshead?
And Ms. Lieber.
Oh, my apologies. I'm so sorry. All right, then we will vote for those that have four votes. So we are voting. So everybody should still get two votes.
No, well, we have to break the tie, right?
Right.
Yeah, so we each get one vote, because we're only breaking the tie for one person.
We need two people, though.
Well, we've already have Keith. He got five.
No.
No. Everybody got four.
Thanks, Carol.
So I will repeat, the four with four votes are Ms. Watley, Ms. Jewitt, and Mr. Grabowski. And everybody will get two votes.
Chairwoman McKinney, I might suggest that you all consult the parliamentarian on this matter, because only eight members are present. As you know, a board majority of five votes would be required, and so we might...
So it's not a majority vote of those present?
It's a majority.
You've got two positions to fill.
Yes.
All right. You have one, two, three, four, five nominees.
Well, now we've got three.
No ma'am, well, let me, I'm trying to, I'm trying to repunt. So you would, again, as you did for the chairmanship, vice chairmanship at the last meeting, whenever it was, you would first entertain a vote from Ms. Lieber. You would have those in favor and those opposed. If she received a majority, then she would be elected to the position, okay? Then you would go to Ms. Watley. If she received two votes in favor and five votes opposed, since one person, one trustee has dropped off, she would not be elected. Then you'd just go down the list until you had two people that received a majority of votes cast. Now, you may end with a four-four vote, but we'll have to see how that goes. But that would be the process and not...
I'm sorry, repeat that? We've already done that.
Yeah, I was going to say, that's what we just did.
Now we have...
So we already got our two.
Then you must continue to vote until a majority carries. You can't eliminate anybody.
Majority is five-three.
It would be a majority of votes cast. There may be abstentions, there may not be abstentions. I can't gauge that at this point in time. But you don't, you don't, you don't throw out the lowest vote getter merely because they did not get a majority.
Okay.
Or plurality, or more votes than someone else got.
Thank you. So we need to take a minute. We will vote again for Lieber, Watley, Roberson, Jewitt, and Grabowski. And everybody gets two votes.
No, that's not what he said.
Nope. You vote on the first nominee and see how the vote goes. If that person gets
Five votes.
Five votes, that person is, has one of the seats. If that person only gets four votes, and there are three votes opposed and one person abstains, that person gets a seat. I don't know how the votes will go. I can only tell you that a majority of the votes cast will determine how the vacancies are filled.
And we each get one vote?
Yes, ma'am, on each nominee.
You get to vote in each.
You have a vote in favor and a vote opposed. If you choose not to vote, that would be an abstention, which is a no vote.
Doesn't make sense. So we vote, there's two, if there's two people, we get to vote for...
There'll be five nominees. There are still five nominees.
You get to vote what?
You get to vote first from Ms. Lieber in favor or opposed.
You vote whether yes or no.
The same way we do the chairmanship.
Correct.
Everything's going to vote on each person, but should the first person get five, they're automatically on. If the second person gets five, they're automatically on, and it's over. You never get down to the last person to vote.
That's correct.
So you're always voting for that, for everybody. You need a majority to get on. So the first person up, if they get five, they're on. Second person up, they get five, they're on. It's over. They get four, we go to the next person. If that third person gets five, they're on.
Which is why if four people spoke at the same time and the chair decided how to put the order in, then there is bias there.
No ma'am, because the chair is obligated to recognize a member of the body before she takes their nominee.
But if everybody spoke at the same time?
That's the chair's call, is who she recognizes. That's the rule. I can't fix that rule. It's what it is.
We understand the rule, but it's slotted once you pick.
Let's say one got five, two got five. Ms. Jewitt's saying the possibility is number three could get seven. But you've already elected the first two. It's just the way it is.
So we have to vote on every name?
But you have to vote on everybody with the understanding that the first two that get five is on. But yes, you have to vote on everybody, with the understanding that the first two that get five is on.
And we get to vote for two trustees?
You're voting on the first vacancy first.
Well, you may not. You may not, Carol. It's the first two that, look, you need a majority to get on. That's it. So it's a simple majority. So five vote, the first person on, that person on. Five votes, second person, that five. Even though the third may have gotten six, it doesn't matter, the first two.
Continue to rotate until we come up with five? It seems like that's what was going to happen.
Doesn't matter. Majority's rule.
All right. Then we will start in reverse order, so that there is no preference for who I was able to recognize first. All those in favor of Mr. Grabowski, please raise your hand. And you say I have to ask for all those that say nay?
You need not, because he received five votes. It doesn't matter what the nays are.
Okay. All right. All those in favor of Ms. Jewitt, please raise your hand.
Aye.
Okay.
You need to ask those opposed, because there may be an abstention.
Okay, thank you. All those opposed to Ms. Jewitt, please raise your hand. All right. All those in favor of Ms. Roberson, please raise your hand. All those opposed, please raise your hand.
Do I need to do that?
You're abstaining, and you're abstaining? And Mr. Hollinshead, how are you voting? Aye, nay, or abstain?
Abstain.
Okay. All those in favor of Ms. Watley, please raise your hand. All those opposed, please raise your hand. Mr. Hollinshead, how do you vote? Yay, nay, or abstain?
Madam Chair, might I ask again how that vote turned out?
Yes, sir. Four in favor and three nay.
With one abstention?
Yes, sir.
And she received a majority of votes cast?
Okay. All right, and then Ms. Lieber, all those...
No reason to move on, because she received a majority of votes cast. The two seats have been filled.
Okay.
Who's that?
Mr. Grabowski.
Five votes.
He received five votes.
Sherlyn, there's up again.
I abstain.
Yeah.
So... Heard the agenda.
For me, it was four in favor, three opposed, and one abstain.
Frampton, do we now move to approve these four names for the foundation? Or is holding their vote handle it?
It's been taken care of.
Thank you. All right. Then that looks like the conclusion of business with closing items being the Audit and Finance Committee meeting on January 7th, Committee of the Whole meeting on January 12th, and the Board meeting on January 26th. Is there a motion for adjournment?
On the second?